Mrs. Galanti, would you call with role?
Mrs. Fee?
Here.
Mr. Deros?
Here.
Mr. Croner?
Here.
Mr. Meyer?
Here.
Mrs. Muehlfeld?
Here.
Mrs. Randall?
Here.
Mrs. Weber?
Here.
Members of the Walertosa School Board value the input of students, parents, staff members, and community members. The Board's regularly-scheduled meetings provide an opportunity for opinions and concerns to be expressed publicly. The Board values all comments and will respectfully consider this input in decision-making. The Board requests that individuals limit their comment on each item to three minutes. Following any comment, an individual Board member may respond on the issue raised. However, it is not the intent of the public comment portion of the agenda for the Board to enter into a debate with a member or members of the community. Because non-agenda items are not publicly posted in advance, no action will be taken on public comment regarding non-agenda items this evening. Is there anyone present this evening who would like to comment on a non-agenda item? If so, please come to the mic and give your name and address, please. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Before that, is there anyone who would like separate action on any item, on the agenda item, addressed separately? Okay, then.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Mrs. Weber?
Yes.
Sorry, there's somebody who wanted to come in.
Am I allowed to...
Speak on the consent agenda? Yes, you are.
Can I do that, please?
Yes.
My name is Kelsey Columbula. I live at 2579 North 72nd Street. I'm a newly hired art teacher at Underwood Elementary School. And I'm requesting a 12-week leave of absence due to the birth of my child. And I understand that before you, it's listed and recommended as a six-week leave of absence. And I wanted to share with you some information regarding my leave before you made a decision. The first, and my first priority in preparing for my leave has been student learning, which I know is a priority of the Board and the employees of the district. And so I've worked out all arrangements with my principal, talked through all the details, and in addition, have found an outstanding substitute, Chris Jack, who has worked and been respected in the community for a long time, has agreed to be my sub. So I'm very confident that student learning will not be disrupted. I've also thought of it from a financial perspective, as I know that would be a concern of yours, and because I am part-time and I do not take the district's insurance, I don't believe there'll be any additional cost to the district. And in fact, it may actually save some money. A third reason, or thing I'd like to share, is I have full support of my principal. She's written a letter of support, and she's been very pleased with the work I have done so far, as have the parents, and they voiced this to her in writing and in person. And in addition, the amount of leave that I'm asking for, because I'm part-time and because it falls over spring break, is really only 15 additional unpaid days, not six weeks, but just 15 additional days. And finally, when I was hired this summer, I was previously working in Racine, where I had a position that had insurance, and I was protected by FMLA. And I desperately wanted to work in the community in which I live, and made the decision to accept the position here when it became available, because I felt it was an opportunity, and looking long-term, this is where I wanted to work. I knew it was a possibility that we would be expecting in the coming year, but I had no guarantees of that. And I knew, leaving, that I would not be compensated financially, or there would be no money to support my leave. And that was a decision we made. But what I didn't realize was that I would not be granted the 12-week standard FMLA leave unpaid. And in fact, I asked specifically with the HR manager while we were discussing my hire about the district policy, and she never said, and never indicated what the policy was, and she also never indicated that it was six weeks, not 12, which was standard practice. And I believe FMLA was created to help families, or help employees balance family and home, and I see the district as supporting that as well. And I think in supporting the 12-week leave, that's what the district is doing. And I believe they all want, the district wants to help their employees support, balance their home and work. And while I wish timing was different, I feel very lucky to have a great job, which I really enjoy, and to be expecting a new member to our family. But as I've outlined here, I've really tried to understand what the concerns and what the factors would be in granting a 12-week versus a six-week leave. And I understand from the administration's perspective that when they look at past practice in similar circumstances, only six weeks have been granted. But that's not something I can control. And when I teach my students, you know, I teach them that we can only control what we can do. And what I can do is I can be a good parent, and I can also be a good teacher, but I need support with the time. I don't believe there are any losers in granting 12 weeks versus six weeks. And I believe it'll give me time to spend with my newborn child and return healthy and strong to give the district many years of good work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Question, please? Question? Yes. Bring your courage back. Is this paid or unpaid?
Unpaid.
Unpaid. Okay. Thank you.
Dr. Earl, would you care to comment on this, please, with respect to the, as a contract?
I'll ask Mr. Chanin to do that.
Thank you.
Yeah, obviously. Very sympathetic with a request for a 12-week leave. Our FMLA policies are very clear that you have to work here for a year, have a certain minimum number of hours worked before you qualify for a 12-week leave of absence. This leave request falls somewhere in the gap between the fact that a new employee has 11 sick days, and a new employee is not qualified for a 12-week leave. We have consistently denied FMLA leave requests within the first year of employment. And this would effectively amend the policy, and has to do with our consistent application of that policy. The six-week unpaid is the manner in which it's been administered for years, but it's, there's not qualification yet for a 12-week leave, and granting exceptions to your policy in effect would amend it, and may amend it in ways that the Board may not have contemplated based on a one-time situation.
Yes, Mrs. Randall?
Well, I guess my request...
Mrs. Randall, may I ask you just one... Mrs. Muehlfeld moved it. Who seconded that motion, please? Thank you, Mr. Croner. Okay, thank you, Mary Jo.
Okay. This probably is a request to remove it from the consent agenda, but given, we have new operating procedures now, we have a new grievance procedure, and so normally, we wouldn't become aware of a situation like this at a board meeting previously. There would have been a contract and a process. I know that there is a grievance process, and I, off the top of my head, can't say, you know, how that would play into this. At any rate, I guess I would like to have further discussion with administration. I know it's difficult to come to a meeting and do this as an employee. And I would also say that if it were a request, you know, for paid leave, you know, I wouldn't be bringing it up for further discussion, but I would request that it be taken off the consent agenda and that we get further information.
Board members, would you accept that recommendation or request from Mrs. Randall that we take separate action on this particular item? Mr. Meyer?
I agree that with a request for separate action, do you want comment on the substance, Mrs. Weber?
Yes.
Well, Mr. Chanin did the right thing by following policy. And I think the Board is for situations where application of the policy doesn't seem to be sensible. So Mr. Chanin could do the right thing by enforcing the policy, and it could be the right thing for us to overrule application of the policy. That's what we're for. I'd like to commend this teacher for having the courage to come to us, to do exactly what we, what at least I wanted teachers to do when we opened the door to bringing statements to the Board. I also will note that the substitute teacher earns less money than the employee does. So this actually would be a financial savings for the district.
Is there further comment? Please, Mr. Croner?
I just had a question for clarification. Right below this item on the consent agenda is a request for child-rearing leave of absence for a full semester the following school year. How does that relate?
You have to be here three years prior to being able to take a child-rearing leave of absence for a semester or a year. That's a different Board policy.
Okay.
This would be a, well, this is not an FMLA leave, but you have to, to get the 12-week leave, you need to be here a year. To take a semester or a year, you need to be here three.
All right, thank you.
Is there any further comment on this particular item?
I have a question.
Yes.
So procedurally, if the Board wishes to make this 12 weeks instead of six, would the procedure be to make a motion to amend the item for separate action from six to 12? I suspect that would be...
Mrs. Fee has her hand up. So I think she's...
I believe procedurally where we are is there's been a request to move a specific item from the consent agenda, so we would need to take action on the remainder of the consent agenda, and then take up the separate item. Whether that would be for action tonight or for postponement to a date certain would be a part of that discussion.
Okay. I think it's been stated fairly. Mrs. Fee, I'm going to ask you to generally guide us through this.
Try.
And I know you will. Is there further comment on this particular item? And we are separating it from the consent agenda. Mr. Meyer, would you like to make a further statement? We are taking separate action.
Well, if members of the Board desire more information, I would hate to have something defeated for want of more information. So I'd be fine, for my opinion, with postponing this decision until we have more information. That said, you know, our various policies, we have a lot of policies, I mean, tons of pages of policies. And no surprise to me that there could be a paragraph in those many pages that, when it comes to pass we will apply the policy, that it's not working out so well for various reasons. Now, perhaps it is working out well, but the fact that it is a policy doesn't mean it's sacred for all time, as far as I'm concerned. That's, again, why we are here, is to be a thinking body, to look at how things are going as we apply our policies.
Any further comment? Yes, Mr. Croner?
Just a point of clarification. Are we taking that separate action on that item first?
Yes.
Okay. And then I would ask Mr. Chanin, just to clarify, if we were to approve a 12-week leave, I wasn't quite, didn't quite understand what you said, the implications would that would be for the future employees that come forward in the future?
I think it's potentially problematic. I mean, obviously, you want to be consistent in the application of your leave policies. The leave policy, the FMLA leave policy is designed to track statute and applies to more than just leaves of absence due to the birth of a child. My concern would be to amend that practice on a case-by-case basis could lead towards potential unequal application of that policy and open up the Board to potential future liability that's not there. Now, that wouldn't otherwise be there. On its facts, we don't make the decisions to whether or not to grant a leave based on whether or not there's an available sub, or whether or not there's a cost benefit to the district. We grant leaves based on the employee's time in the district, based on the circumstances of their health, or the birth of a child, or the illness of a family member, or those other statutory criteria. And I think we'd have to contemplate whether or not we would want case-by-case application by the Board for those employees who have less than a year. And I think that that's what ultimately granting this request asks the Board to do, is either effectively amend our policy that you get 12 weeks' leave from day one, or some other less-than-a-year criteria, or ask the Board to make case-by-case decisions about host of family and medical leave issues, which is probably not a good way for the administering of an equitable leave policy. It can be done. It's just a matter of a policy decision on the Board's part, whether or not they want to be in either of those two circumstances, which is giving more entitlement to leave early on, earlier on in employment, and there's nothing that prohibits you from doing that. You could set that qualifying period at less than a year. It just can't be more than a year. Or you can make decisions on a case-by-case basis. And that's really a matter of Board policy. I don't think it's wise, but it's not prohibited.
So if we were to change the policy, say, in the future, that these decisions, or the amount of leave beyond what was legally required would be at the discretion of the Board, that would require us to rule on every leave that can't be forced?
Potentially. It depends on how you rewrite the policy. I mean, right now, this is discretionary act. Right now, the administration said there's a hole in a policy for someone in their first year, in that they do not qualify for FMLA leave, whether they're ill, have a disability, birth of a child, serious health condition of their family member, whatever that reason is, we generally limit that leave to six weeks in the first year, because they're not a long-term employee, and they don't qualify for the protections of the Family Medical Leave Act. But we could change that qualification period. But, I mean, already, there's an act of discretion by the administration. We just try to be consistent in our application of discretion, because the more discretion you exercise in those cases, the more you open yourself up to questions of favoritism, questions of discriminatory treatment. And we try not to make those decisions on how well-liked an employee is, but the circumstances giving rise to the leave.
Mrs. Randall?
Thank you, Mr. Chanin. I appreciate that. However, I'm not asking for separate action, or for a decision on this tonight. I am, however, again, pointing out that there's something amiss here with a process that allows it, this is the first time we hear anything about this as a Board. And also, our grievance process, I don't know. And also, it used to be a contract that would determine all of the different options and steps that were taken. And as a Board, we have not discussed this particular part of the human resources policies prior to tonight. And so, again, my request is for more information from administration, to remove it from the consent agenda tonight, and give the Board an opportunity to review it and ask the questions that we need to ask.
Board members, I'd like you to react to Mrs. Randall's request. Mrs. Muehlfeld, please?
I have another suggestion. It does not seem that the six weeks from the dates mentioned is what is in dispute. It is really an additional six-week leave that we might want to consider. So in my opinion, I think we could still vote on the consent agenda as requested, and we could direct administration to bring this back upon further review to the Board for an additional six weeks. That might be one way to handle it.
Is there anyone? Okay, Mr. Meyer?
I see Mrs. Muehlfeld's point, that we could pass this tonight as is, and then bring the, you know, weeks seven through 12, or a policy change, as Mrs. Randall suggested, back to the Board. Can we have the policy agended for discussion at the next meeting?
Yes.
Is that a promise?
No, we can certainly put it on the agenda.
Okay.
Is there anyone else? Mrs. Fee?
I was just going to say that if Mrs. Randall wishes us to take action on her request, it needs to be in the form of a motion. At this point, the only motion before us for discussion is as written in the consent agenda. So I understand that there's a request, and it could be done by unanimous consent if everyone agreed, but otherwise, the only way to take action on that, I believe, is to make a motion, to postpone it to a date certain.
Do you want me to make a motion?
Go ahead, please.
But don't we have a motion on the floor that we have to act on first?
Excuse me. Can you allow Mrs. Randall to finish first, and then...
Well, first of all, if anybody asks for something, it will be removed from the consent agenda, it's removed, correct? Okay, so...
There'll have to be action taken.
For separate action, yes. Okay. So I make a motion that, I don't know if, do you want me to read this, Mrs. Galanti?
Yes.
Okay. The item for the request for a six-week child-rearing leave of absence for Elizabeth Kelsey Columbula, part-time art teacher at Underwood Elementary from 2/1912 to 3/3012, be held over until the Board has an opportunity to review the policies that apply to this request. And I still move.
Thank you. Is there a second to Mrs. Randall's motion?
Second.
Mr. Deros, thank you. Discussion. Mr. Meyer?
My inclination is to do the thing we can do with certainty tonight, which I suspect we want to do, is to approve the six weeks. And that we have, we do have a commitment from administration, and our President honors administration's request to bring things to the agenda, that the policy itself, the underlying policy, will come to the Board at the next meeting. That addresses Mr. Chanin's concerns about, you know, ad hoc exceptions. That may have been a redundant statement, but, so, that's my view. I wouldn't postpone providing the six weeks now. I'd make that certain. And we know that the underlying policy will come to the Board for discussion. And I think that's in line with what, is that in line, Mrs. Muehlfeld, please, if the Chair recognizes you with what you're suggesting?
Yes.
Is there further discussion before I ask Mrs. Fee for, that we are clarif, just, are we moving in the right direction?
I believe so. We'll have to take action on Mrs. Randall's motion, and then on the remainder of the consent agenda.
And I'm going to Mrs. Fee, because when I was elected President, I asked Mrs. Fee to please, she is an expert on Robert's Rules of Order, and I asked her she would continue in that manner. So if there is, yes, Mr. Croner?
I do have a comment. I'm not going to support the motion. I'm not sure how I feel about the 12-week leave yet, but what is requested in the consent agenda is well within our policies. So it doesn't seem appropriate to me to take off the table what is an appropriate leave of absence for this person. So I, for that reason, I would oppose the motion to table this, and at this point.
I have a question.
Yes, Mrs. Randall?
So, Mrs. Fee, what is required for this to be simply taken off the consent agenda? Just a request, correct?
I don't, once it's been moved and seconded, I believe that there has to be action taken. But the action can be to postpone it to a subsequent date, I believe.
Right, but I guess my point is, when we go to approve the consent agenda, this is not on there any longer.
Correct.
Okay. So I just wanted to be clear about that.
There will be, there'll be separate action taken on your motion, and then there'll be action taken both on this item. If your motion passes, then this will be postponed to a subsequent date. If your motion fails, then there'll be action taken on that item separately, and then on the remainder of the consent agenda.
Thank you. That was my understanding. Okay.
Thank you. Further comment or question? I believe we need to take community comment also on this. Okay? Community comment on the motion that Mrs. Randall has made, please. Seeing none? Mrs. Galanti, would you read the motion as presented?
It is recommended that the School Board take separate action on the request for a six-week child-rearing leave of absence for Elizabeth Kelsey Columbula, part-time art teacher at Underwood Elementary from February 1912 to March 3012, and to delay it until, for more discussion at a future meeting.
Thank you. Okay. We'll call vote.
Mrs. Fee?
No.
Mr. Deros?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
No.
Mr. Meyer?
No.
Mrs. Muehlfeld?
No.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Weber?
No. So the motion fails, and now, Anne, we will vote on the complete...
That item is still to be dealt with separately.
Yep.
There was a request to take separate action. That stands despite the failure of the motion to adjourn it to a subsequent date. So I believe we need to vote separately on those two actions.
Mrs. Weber?
Yes, please. Just, is that complete, Mrs. Fee?
I'm happy to hear what Mr. Croner has to say.
I'm only confused, because the first part of the motion was to separate it from the consent agenda. So if that motion failed, it's still on the consent agenda.
And could we take separate action on this item now?
Yes, I think we're getting bogged down much more than necessary. I believe that Mrs. Randall asked for separate action, then made a motion, which was a bit muddy, but there was a previous request for separate action before the motion was made, so I believe we need to honor that.
Bill? You're shaking your head.
No, that's fine. I'm just, according to the way the motion was written, it would have to have been asked to be taken off the agenda again, and it was.
So now, if you're confused, I'm confused. Separate action on the item concerning the leave of absence. Anne, help me. What are we actually voting on now?
The motion as drafted and presented in the agenda.
As presented, originally presented.
Okay. So the motion is on the language as it appears on the agenda.
Okay. Thank you. Any further questions? Any further questions? Yes, Mr. Dros?
Okay, I thought I wasn't confused, but now, I just want to make sure. Does this, if we approve this, the six weeks, can the teacher still come back and ask for another six weeks? How does she do that?
If we change the policy?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, you're asking, so, we give her the six weeks now, then suppose we change the policy. Oh, is it too late for her to get 12 weeks because we've already granted six? Are we going to be that way?
Yeah, that's the way we seem to be.
Okay, I hope it wasn't going to be that way.
I'm going to add, Mr. Chanon, do you have any comment or clarification or question that you'd like to pose to us?
I mean, I think I understand procedurally where you're at, which is you're voting to approve six weeks. If you vote to approve that, the teacher would get a letter saying she has six weeks granted for sure, and that you are basically inviting the administration to bring this back forward for a further consideration of the implication of granting an additional six weeks, and that you basically directed us to bring that back to you for further discussion, and its policy implication, that's what I understand.
What I would add, though, is that it's not, it's not bringing back this request, it's bringing back the policy to discuss, and if the policy changes, then it would, it would impact this employee. So, not, you're not necessarily discussing a individual's situation, you're discussing the policy, is what's to be brought back.
Mr. Weber?
So, if we grant this request tonight, now, let's say it goes down this road where we discuss the policy next week. Suppose we do decide to change the policy. We change the policy to 12 weeks. Does Mrs. Columbula retroactively get 12 weeks if the policy changes after we grant six weeks and before her six weeks goes into effect? Is that what you're...
That's what I'm trying to figure out, yeah.
I think that if you decided to affirmatively change the policy, we would find a way to get her back in front of the board, one way or the other, to approve that, and that'd be fairly clear direction.
That wouldn't be an exception, then, to bring her back again?
Well, the policy would be amended going forward. We're not going to give people six weeks off who are in the past. I don't think that'd be problematic.
Dr. Earl, you have not had any opportunity. Do you wish to say anything on this issue?
No, I think enough has been said. We'll bring the policy back and we'll discuss that policy.
Mrs. Randall?
I just would ask my fellow board members to consider that all of these questions that are being asked are because we are not familiar with the policy, we are not familiar with how we are carrying out policy without bargaining contracts, and we need to have a better understanding of it. And again, I was not making a request for action tonight, I was making a request for a review of that policy. It may not even require a change, and I think Mr. Chanon would probably agree. We may find that we don't have to change the policy, that we may just invoke an exception that's already there, but we don't know any of that. And again, this is the first time this came to us tonight, so I would really ask that we simply get all the information before we make our decision.
And if I may, for clarity's sake, I would say that what we're doing is not inconsistent with what we've done in the past. So, this isn't a case where the collective bargaining agreement provided greater guidance than what we're doing. What we're doing here is what we have done consistently, collective bargaining agreement or not. So, just to kind of clarify that, what is probably unusual is that it probably would have been resolved through a discussion with the union.
You're saying no? Honey?
Vote on the separate action.
Okay, thank you. I believe then we are in order to take a motion on separate action, is correctly stated? Okay, roll call vote, please, on that. Does anyone, yes, Mr. Kroner?
To clarify, we're voting on the item of the agenda which reads, "It is recommended that the school board approve the following: the request for a six-week child-rearing leave of absence for Elizabeth Kelsey Columbula," and I apologize if I'm mispronouncing your name, "part-time art teacher at Underwood Elementary from 2/1912 to 3/3012." That's what we're voting on right now.
Yes.
Thank you.
Payboard?
Roll call.
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. Dros?
Yes.
Mr. Kroner?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Muufeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
No.
Mrs. Weber?
Yes.
And now, we still need to vote on the remainder of the consent agenda.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes, I, please, let me make just one comment. In this new world we have, without a collective bargaining agreement, and with our new policy that employees may bring things directly to the board, we may see a number of these kinds of discussions. And this board really does get to be a policy board and make decisions on how we treat people, and we won't be bound by a contract. We can do what we think is right. Now, yes, I see Mr. Chanon's advice that we need to do it consistently and actually have policies, but the fact that this can come to the board, and the board can make the decision, I think, is a good thing.
Thank you. If there is no further discussion, we will vote on the consent agenda that is remaining with the one part, one item removed. Okay, roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. Dros?
Yes.
Mr. Kroner?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Muufeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mrs. Weber?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer, thank you for your comments, and this has been a very healthy discussion. It's a learning discussion, and I appreciate your comments. Thank you, audience, for bearing with us. This is a learning experience for us. Thank you. If we may move on, please. Recognitions. Mr. Kroner?
Thank you, Mrs. Weber. The Wauwatosa School District has been placed on the College Board's AP District Honor Roll for the second year. The district is one of fewer than 400 public school districts in the nation being honored by the College Board for simultaneously increasing access to advanced placement coursework while maintaining or increasing the percentage of students earning scores of three or higher on AP exams, and one of five in the state to receive this honor two years in a row. Since 2009, the district increased the number of students participating in AP courses from 312 to 390. Increasing opportunities for students to participate in AP classes is one of the district's four goals approved by the school board.
Thank you, Mr. Kroner. I'd like to make one additional recognition, please. It has come to my attention that Mr. Tom Thany, the theater director at Wauwatosa East High School, is being honored in a successful production of, well, this is, I'm going to add mine, this is a successful production of Sereno de Bergerac, which just was an excellent performance by young people in a high school. But Mr. Thany is being honored for his years of service, 15 years at East, 30 years at Brookfield High School, and he will become an elite group of 11, being recognized with the, I want to get the correct, the Theater Directors Hall of Fame, and he was honored at this, at UW-Whitewater. Truly, a fine recognition for Mr. Thany for East High School. This gentleman has given so much, it continues a reputation that Wauwatosa East enjoys. And so, I would like to commend, on behalf of the board and the community, Mr. Thany for this very, I think, outstanding honor. Board members, any questions or comments? Thank you. If we may move on, please, to Business Services, Mr. Meyer?
It is recommended that the school board approve the revision for policy 6610, Student Activity Fund, to allow activity funds to be used for contributions to fundraising drives for charitable organizations, as was presented and discussed at the November 14 meeting, and I so move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second?
Mrs. Randall? Discussion, please. Meyer, Mr. Meyer?
Just a question for the community who wasn't observing in the last meeting. Can Dr. Earl or Mr. Mack explain once more why we wish to do this?
I'll ask Dr. Earl first and add any additional comments.
This is a simple change to align the policy with practice. It allows students, which we do at all of our schools, fundraising for charitable, whether it's pennies for kids or those type of events which occur throughout the year at all of our schools. So, this aligns our policy with that practice and allows that to continue.
Thank you.
Mr. Meyer, or, excuse me, Mr. Mack, would you like to add anything to that?
No, we simply could change what we're actively doing in practice. I think there's...
Thank you. Is there any further comment on behalf of the board? If not, is there any community comment? Seeing none? Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. Dros?
Yes.
Mr. Kroner?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Muufeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mrs. Weber?
Yes.
Student Services, please, Mrs. Fee?
It is recommended that the school board approve the following for determining space available for the 2012-2013 school year for Chapter 220 and open enrollment, as presented and discussed at the November 14 meeting. A, no seats available for new students through the Chapter 220 program. B, use a maximum class size of 18 students per class at K4 and K5, and 20 at grades 1 through 5. C, use a maximum class size of 23 in the core academic subjects at the secondary level, grade 6 through 12. D, admit continuing students, those currently on tuition waivers, outside the space availability determined using the class-size guidelines of 18, 20, or 23 as stated above. And E, maintain the current practice of accepting siblings of current students within available space determinations. Sibling applicants receive statutory preference in the lottery process, and I so move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Kroner, thank you. Board members, any comments or questions? This was a complete discussion in our last board meeting. Seeing none, is there any community comment or question on the Student Services item? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. Dros?
Yes.
Mr. Kroner?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Muufeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mrs. Weber?
Yes.
Student Services, Spirit, and I believe Ms. Kwiatkowski will make that presentation.
Thank you. Actually, well, I'll start by introducing our topic for this evening. The Spirit program was a program that both of our high schools were involved in last April. Students from both high schools spent two days together, working with representatives from the Department of Justice, talking about issues related to racism in school. Administration was involved in the activity, as well as some of our Student Services staff. Since that day, students have gone back to their schools, and there's been a variety of different kinds of follow-up activities and efforts that kind of started out of the original Spirit program. So, while the Spirit program is over, the spirit of the program is continuing at both East and West. And so, tonight, Sonya Nelson, a school social worker at East, along with Mr. Hughes, are going to share with the board and the community some of the things that are happening in their school. Also, I know Mrs. Wayne Scott is in the audience tonight, and she's been pretty directly involved with this program as well. So, I'm going to turn it over to them, I'm just here to support them.
Hi. My name's Sonya Nelson, I'm a school social worker at Wauwatosa East and Plink Grove School. This is my 10th year, and in my years here and prior to my years here, there have been a variety of activities and initiatives, staff involved in, in trying to create a sense of unity in our community, to try to have a welcoming environment for all students and families, to help promote communication between people who might be different in a variety of ways. The Spirit program happened this last spring, and principals and guidance counselors put together a group of students that they felt were somewhat of a microcosm of our high schools, and brought them together for those two days to really find out from them what their experience is, and what they feel like they would like to have done to change maybe the environment. The students that we were involved with at East continue to be involved. In the spring, they asked for some short and long-term goals. Their short-term goals included being able to talk in front of the teaching staff, to create a campaign, and also to do a little bit of a survey to see what maybe needs we have at East High School. Last spring, we were able to bring the students before staff, and they were able to talk about their experiences from their own personal perspective, about working and being in classes at East. The East staff took it to heart, and they were really wonderful and appreciating students' input. We also had students go through the school and do a, participate in a survey where they stood around the halls and they counted the number of racial slurs they heard, or other types of slurs that speak to any particular group of people, to just kind of see what it is that their, if their experience, trying to, I guess, quantify their experience. And then, the other thing we did, which was quite, I thought, quite successful, was a pay-it-forward campaign. What our students decided to do is, they created a campaign and went to every classroom at East High School, did a short presentation to everyone in the building within one class hour, and then we had a week campaign where, the short of it is, that students, that our Spirit students, had three red ribbons, and they were to go out into the school and do a kind act or a meaningful compliment to someone else in the school, give them, put the ribbon around their wrist, and then those recipients were to go to the office, collect three more, and then pay it forward. So, within maybe three or four days, we had distributed over 4,000 of those ribbons, and the students also started a community Facebook page called Pay it for Wauwatosa, trying to collect, create a sense of community beyond the schools of the spirit of Wauwatosa. This school year, we have brought the Spirit kids back together. They want to start a new club, which they're calling Cafe, creating Cultural Alliances for East, that's the acronym, and they are, and so, what we've done is, we brought the Spirit group in for a Courageous Conversations curriculum that we developed a few years back. Cindy Carter and I worked with these students, and basically, the point of that was to create a common, common language to teach the difference between dialogue and debate, to practice active listening, and those types of things that are good for, you know, good community involvement and learning about difference. So, we went through that curriculum, and we're now just starting this week on the club. They want, they have several things already that they have planned to do. So, that's where we're at with those. I know over at West, they had a pilot pay-it-forward program. They have a similar club over there called Crash, Creating Real American Social Harmony, that may be getting involved with this as well. And I believe this fall, their Spirit students spoke to the staff as well.
I think that one of the hardest things last spring, as an administrator, was to sit and listen to students, talk about their perspective and their experiences, and hear things that didn't make me feel good about what was going on in our schools, that it's a different experience, or there are things that they are reporting back that, as a principal and as a parent, would make me say, I can't believe that's happening here. Whether it's how people perceive the dress code being enforced or rules being enforced, was hard to sit and listen to as a building principal, but yet, very important to get a full view of what is going on, you know, within our schools, and what our children are seeing and hearing and feeling every day, because in a school of 1,200, adults aren't everywhere. And I would say that even the things that happen outside of school have an impact on what goes on in school, so to get a better understanding and a full feeling of what kids are going through, and the pressures that are on them, and the way they feel, and how they perceive the acts of adults, was really a growing experience for me, and hard to sit there and hear.
You know, and then going back to last April and having the opportunity to work with the Department of Justice, I think one of the benefits of the framework we were able to participate in is in addition to the students helping us identify and prioritize what the problems were, they spent some time talking about what we could do to resolve it. And the work that's currently happening in, at both East and West are directly related to some of the things that they discussed last April. And even though some of those students are no longer, they've graduated and they aren't part of our district anymore, their voice is still here. You know, they worked with us for, they put two days, they gave up two days of school to spend some time with the district, helping us better understand it and then identify strategies that we could use to move forward. Another piece to all of this is, again, you know, recently being notified that we received our school counseling grant. One of the three priorities of the grant is equity and diversity. And last week, my goal was to not start my Thanksgiving break until I was able to finalize the hiring of our counselors, and we were able to do that last week. And actually, one of our current social workers, Stacy Braun, I believe some of you may know her, has accepted the position to coordinate the diversity and equity efforts. So I'm really comfort, I'm really excited to have Stacy pursue that. Stacy knows our district, but I know that Stacy's familiarity with our district as well as some of the current work of the Spirit program should be able to transition right in and really make some nice progress, I believe, in regard to district-wide our efforts around equity and diversity for students.
Board members, questions, comments? Yes, Mr. Croner?
Thank you. This sounds like a really good program. I've come to appreciate over the years how important it is for kids to feel welcome at school. If they don't feel welcome, they're not going to learn as well, especially kids that are lacking in confidence. So if this, and Mr. Hughes, you mentioned how it was enlightening to hear in more depth from the students about how they felt in school and how they felt they were received by their classmates and teachers. Is there a way, or have you thought about a way to measure that or to keep in contact with the students so we know whether this program is improving the culture of the school? Or how would we measure that? So in the spring, you can say, we've tried these things and these areas have really gotten better, or we need to do something different in this area?
I haven't really thought about a hard and fast way to measure the impacts of the Spirit program yet. We do some surveying at a district level. Previously, we've done some surveying about attitudes and engagement towards school. That may give us an indication of how students compared to two years ago to this group or whenever we do that survey next, it may give us some insight if kids are feeling more connected. But I don't think we've come up with a measurable way yet to check the impacts, student perspective, on how they feel at school. They went as far as saying, you need to hire more minority teachers, because there aren't any people like this. They have said, we need more ethnic food choices. We serve more than nacho, we should serve more than nachos. And they were very straightforward and told, you know, we should have more than nachos. That's not the only, you know, food out there. So I think there's a lot of ways that we'll see things that have brought about change. Measuring somebody's comfort level and how they feel is a little more difficult.
Well, and I would suggest that as we look at achievement gaps and students' overall achievement. So we do do things, like our student engagement survey that we conducted about two years ago. We all, you know, there are some surveys that we do that where students can respond, but really, if students are comfortable, going back to what you originally said, Mr. Croner, when students are comfortable at school, they're more likely to be successful. So looking at the overall achievement of students, I think, is a very helpful indicator for us to look at. Our grant also requires some data collections. One of the first steps is doing some baseline data. So I'm actually having, I have a phone conference on Wednesday to talk to somebody about assisting us with some of that baseline data.
I have an example of something we're doing. I try to measure things. And our, over at East, one of the, over a while, for a while now, students have said that they want more representation in the Career Center in terms of college visits and that type of thing. Particularly, we had Black Leaders of Wauwautosa Club for a while, for four or five years, and they talked about that quite a lot, about having representation of college visits. This school year, we were able, primarily through the work of Sandy Criston over at East, we're able to bring in, we have our third, we've had our third historically black college and university come visit, and two of which from Atlanta, so it's a little bit difficult to get them, and one from Arkansas. We have another university from Ohio coming up this next month. And what we're doing is we're tracking the students who are coming to these college visits and then subsequently utilizing the Career Center. So that's just like a small example of how we're trying to impact students and bring representation to the building beyond being able to hire a more diverse staff. We're trying to bring in adults into the school that can serve as, you know, mentors and, you know, provide those opportunities.
Thank you.
Mrs. Randall?
Teresa, the grant, does that address all minority groups, including special education and?
The grant is, primary purpose of the grant is to assist in our efforts of our current Student Services delivery model, which is for all students. So targeting, with the equity and diversity piece being a priority, certainly that would include students, socioeconomic students, minority students, students with disabilities would be part of that. Another big piece of it is transition as well, and those groups often have difficulty with transition. So yes.
Because I, you know, we have been trying to get a handle on our gaps, on our performance gaps for quite some time now. Is this maybe the missing piece, this grant and the reporting guidelines, to really get something in black and white? And I know, I understand you've always tried to do that, but we have been trying for a long time. Is this going to give us a better opportunity for reporting and tracking?
I believe that this grant is going to help us in our efforts to close the achievement gap.
All right, thank you.
Further comments? Mr. Hughes, first, this is not to say that this is a new program in Wauwautosa. I think we've been working at this for a long time. This is a way that we can move maybe even in more circles, more successes. Would you agree with that?
Yeah, I would agree with that. I think that the group of students we brought together for Spirit represents a lot of different groups. And Sonya referenced Black Leaders of Wauwautosa, a club we had started at East a couple of years ago. We've expanded out now and had, I think, a deeper understanding of what diversity in our school is like, about the racial groups and ethnic and a variety of different groups that really fit into the broader definition of diversity. So it's an opportunity to bring more kids and adults addressing the same issue, but moving forward, not leaving someone behind. And so I think that the new, the Cafe group or even just the Spirit group itself, regardless of which high school it's at, is bringing more kids together, sharing similar experiences with the desire to make Wauwautosa East, Wauwautosa West, Wauwautosa School District better for everybody. If they can't do it for themselves yet, it is for the kids that are coming behind them, which is probably the most admirable thing that the group is doing.
In a very innocent way, sometimes we forget, perhaps a small group, in this way, it's inclusive. We're going to try and meet the needs of all. And I would ask, could we have Wauwautosa West come and speak sometime and share with us what they are doing, because it sounds like it's just a bit different and yet the same? Is that a good statement to make, or Sonya's saying yes?
Well, yes, we interpret, you know, we have different groups of students, but I think what the potential here is that we can bring the two schools together, two groups of students. They may express it differently, but we're going to have some overlap. We're going to try to have some unifying activities and themes that happen at both sides of town at the same time, trying to create a little bit more of that unity.
Is there also an opportunity, as we move forward, that we might move into the middle schools also with this program? I think...
I know that, I know at the high school level that the students would have been talking about that. How they can be models for the younger set, like they could involve themselves with the younger ages, but in terms systemically.
And systemically, that's the goal of the grant. Our person who is leading our efforts around diversity and equity for the remainder of this year, we are actually housing her at the middle school to help our efforts that we know, you know, we've got the ball moving in our direction at the high school to help bring us closer there. So yes.
And then I would be bold to say that after we are successful at the junior high, we move into the elementary, because it's a district-wide concern that we should have.
Definitely. And I do want to say, just from, at the middle school and elementary level, while there are efforts currently going on there, while they weren't part of the Spirit programs, they're a scripted program facilitated by the Department of Justice that was only available to high school students, there are a lot of current efforts through our curriculum that we deliver at the elementary level in regard to peer relationships, bullying, those kinds of things, as well as some efforts at the middle school. So while the Spirit program is one of the many things around promoting a better sense of community for all, it's not the only thing in our schools.
I would just ask that please, if you could come back, perhaps at the end of the school year, to tell us where you feel we have made some strides, because it's an excellent report and excellent move that we're making. Is there any community comment on this, please? Seeing none, thank you very, very much. If we could move on to the online courses, I believe Ms. Ehrenberger is going to introduce that?
Good evening. Before I get started this evening with the online, I'd like to take a minute to recognize a young man that's in our audience this evening. Luke Solomon is a, what year are you, Luke? I apologize. Is a senior at West High School. And West High School, the journalism department was recently recognized at the National Conference in Minneapolis, and their website was recognized. And since we're on the topic here of online courses, Luke actually is one of our key contributors to that website at West High School. So I wanted to take a minute and congratulate Luke on that hard work and effort that he's put into it, and I know he has a few comments he'd like to make if we could give him a minute.
Hi, my name is Luke Salamoni. I'm the managing editor of wauwautasawest.com. I'm thankful for this opportunity to speak, as well as my opportunity that Mr. Lozarsky has granted me as website editor. And I wish more students had the opportunity for the, for, to do the same things that I'm doing in terms of journalism. And I think the best scenario for this is a journalism class. And so what happened was recently, several students traveled to Minneapolis, Minnesota International JEANSPA Journalism Conference, and Wauwautosa West's website was ranked eighth nationally at the Best of Show Awards. And also, our broadcast program was also recognized. They placed seventh in the nation. And West was the only school that did not have a journalism class. So we placed among people that had a specific classed time, school time devoted to this. I understand it isn't easy to make a new class and curriculum, but ours is a completely voluntary extracurricular club, and the only way to grow as of now is for the same students to do more work instead of having a club, I mean, instead of having a class. With a class, the problems we have with the lack of content will be greatly diminished. Thank you.
Congratulations, Luke, and thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Luke or comments before we let him loose?
Yes, Mr. Meyer?
I just want to ask, how does it feel to be nationally ranked?
I think that we've known for a long time that we've had a really nice website, and it's just, it's kind of, I mean, we've known we were there, like, right up there, so it's really fulfilling to know that other people think the same as we do.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Randall?
I would just like to congratulate you also, and particularly your recognition of the fact that it's a volunteer-type endeavor, that it's something you have to do, and that you articulated that that is part of the value for you, and that's a really good thing to learn and to remember.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are going to go on with our presentation this evening on the online administrative guidelines. Presently, we do not have any administrative guidelines for the use of online course.
Ms. Ehrenberger?
Yes.
Before you continue, you have another guest at the table that some may not know, because he's moved in a new direction the last couple of years.
Well, with me tonight, I have Dennis Mahoney, who is the principal at the Detention Center, and it's true, he may not be known. And I also, Teresa, the three of us are representing the work that we put into the administrative guidelines, so.
Mr. Mahoney, it's good to see you.
Good to see you, Ms. Mahoney.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lois. Presently, there are no administrative guidelines for the use of online courses in the district. Our current usage of online courses is related to extenuating circumstances rather than a student choice or by student selection. Online courses have been replacing the traditional use of correspondence courses in the district. So while we've seen an increase in online courses, not a significant increase, it's really been a transition of, instead of using correspondence courses, we're using online courses for things like makeup credit for graduation, a need for an alternative environment for a student to meet gifted student needs, especially when we're trying to reduce travel in some situations or as an unresolvable schedule conflict. So presently, this type of usage results in about twenty-three students taking an online course. We know from school counselor input, summer school interest in the online economics course, and the interest that we've had in the hybrid courses, that certainly we have students that have an interest in, beyond special circumstances, in possibly participating in an online experience. As a result, we have had more requests for students that are just wishing to select and have the experience. And as a result, we felt that before we could go any further, we really needed to have some conversation about what are some guidelines that we think would be necessary to guide the practice of letting students select online courses. And that is the draft that we presented with you in your board packet. So we also want to point out that there are sometimes, from a fiscal standpoint, that we would need a number of students enrolled in the same online course for it to become physically responsible for us. So if we were just to allow students to randomly take online courses, that would come at some kind of considerable cost to the district, because an online course can cost anywhere from, you know, two hundred dollars to three hundred and fifty dollars plus per a half a credit or a semester credit. So what you have in front of you are the administrative guidelines that Mr. Mahoney and Mrs. Kwiatkowski and I worked on and presented as a draft for you to be aware of what we were considering. Is there anything?
I guess the only thing that I would add is that I was, in order to prepare for today, I was going through the students, and when this, you have to realize, we have a couple of different things going on. There was, Keel had a program that they were using, and then later on, I focused specifically on Advanced Academics, a different company, and of those, I had fifteen. We started out the year, we had six students that had applied for open enrollment. We started out the year, we had six students that had applied for open enrollment. And those students, we had basically expressed the desire not, not to, not to come here, but to go to a place where they could get a full-time virtual school. Of those, we were able to pull back six who are doing fairly well in our program, which is basically course offerings, we're offering courses. We have a young man over at Children's Hospital who has been able to take advantage of one of our programs. We have a number of kids that have been truant and not attending school. And we were able to get some of them, not all, but a couple of them to take this seriously and make some progress. And we also have about six other students that are in all sorts of combinations they're in. They're way behind classes, maybe they've given up, not coming to school, and maybe have some health issues, depression, other things. And so, of those 15 that I counted today, because I just did progress reports for them, I, we have two that we're really worried about that we haven't been able to say that we're making what I would consider something I could call progress and tell you that it's progress. But that leaves the rest of them, some 13 of the 15 that are making progress, maybe not at the rate that, you know, we would like, but they're moving ahead. So, it gives you a little in addition to what Beth was saying as far as scenarios and what the, we're proposing. I just wanted to give you a flavor of the kind of students that I'm seeing so far in the program.
I think another couple of components as well, the, when you look at the numbers alone and the fact that we have 7,400 kids in the district and we only have 23 students taking online courses, it's not a lot of students. And I think there's more opportunities, we need to create more opportunities for students to take more online courses. I've moved from a point where I thought we should have a graduation requirement that every student took an online course. But then I've shifted and said, well, would we force a student that doesn't learn from a lecture to sit through a lecture all the time and say that you have to take a lecture course? This is just a different mode of delivery. But I think we need to have, have it available. And when we're talking about the cost, and if you look at just, and there's a couple of different options out there, the Appleton e-school, you can actually buy into the e-school for $200,000 upfront. And then each course is $60 per seat. And then you supply some FTEs to actually teach those courses. Advanced academics is a different piece. And if we were to go to a statewide virtual school, would we be able to get courses for free for our students? So, we're not at the point to move down that road yet. But even if we listed online courses in the course catalog and just saying $300 a course, it's roughly about $80,000 to offset, if we have the same number of students taking a certain course, to offset the equivalent of a, of a full teacher cost or a full teacher load, the way we currently schedule. So, when you, if you say the average teacher is $80,000, it kind of offsets equally, roughly, when you look at those online courses. In other words, that would be 26 students taking an online course and then five different courses that were taken, that would be the equivalent. And that would cost about $80,000 through, through the vendors that we use. So, that's something for consideration that we're, we're looking into as well.
Anne?
Thank you. I would like to just ask a question about your extenuating circumstances in your draft. I noticed that there's an extenuating circumstance specifically related to IEPs or RTI, but there's nothing with regards to DEPs. Was there a conversation about whether that should be delineated as an extenuating circumstance? And if so, why did it end up not on the list?
You know, yes, that was originally, we, because we currently do use online coursework for DEPs. The very first extenuating circumstance, a curricular need is not available in our established curricular framework and is necessary to maintain the student's learning development. We broadened it. Originally, that statement had something about gifted, but we broadened it so that we allowed, you know, more latitude in making that kind of decision in the guideline. We know about the gifted circumstances, but there may be others too. And so, it, we thought that that statement allowed for that, the use of an online course in a DEP.
I assumed it could fit there and it could also fit under, of course, the catch-all other extenuating circumstances. But I wondered if there had been an actual conversation about that.
Yeah.
So, thank you for explaining that. Thank you.
Yeah, this is, I heard this evening a few comments about online school for elementary level. Have, not that I'm saying we're going there or even suggesting, but have you read or heard anything on that? I thought it was only for the upper level.
We actually do have students right, we do have, I think, one or two elementary students right now that are doing online coursework and it is through our gifted program, where we're not able to meet their needs in their building. And they've chosen versus traveling to the middle school to stay in the elementary school building. And we provide the opportunity for them either through online extension or an actual course that's online to meet their academic need.
And how long have we had that? Is this?
We've been doing that now for, we, we've had students as, probably at least a couple of students doing that for as long as I've been here. We, we use, sometimes we use WICDE, which is the Gifted and Talented Organization that has online opportunities for students. And sometimes we've used Alec, which is a different online option that we've found a lot of times can help us to fill in gaps for our gifted students. But it's usually a couple of year where we're not able to meet their needs in our curriculum.
That's always, at least to my, has brought to my attention that we were not serving the gifted young people. Have you seen an improvement in that where these young people are more challenged, satisfied, encouraged? Would you?
Absolutely. Actually, I'd be happy to have Jean Paulus join me at a board meeting in the future to talk about the significant changes we've had in the gifted program. And we have, I, I believe, we have lots of evidence to show that we have increased opportunities for gifted students and are actually, probably did a better job sometimes at the elementary. Maybe some people wouldn't agree completely. But we actually have expanded a lot into the middle and high school. And we've actually expanded curricular areas of meeting gifted students' needs. So, I think Jean has been, made significant contribution to improving the gifted program and the service to the students.
What, the online, what grades, do you have an idea what grades the online young people at elementary are?
I believe they're both fifth grade.
Both fifth grade? Mm-hmm. I think it's great.
But we have other students that are in the gifted program at the fifth grade level that are being transported to middle schools for acceleration. It's just that in some situations, that's not always a good option for the student or, you know, what, whatever the situation is, we try to work with it. So, there's a couple of situations where that hasn't worked and so we work with them through something online.
We also have a number of elementary students that open enrolled out to online virtual schools as well. So, there are schools out there that, that are from K through 12.
I think it's great. I think we need to continue to communicate that so that the community knows what is available. This is opening more doors for us. Thank you. Mary Jo?
I'm going to put Dr. Earl on the spot a little bit. Somebody reminded me yesterday that you came to us as an award-winning superintendent for creating online schools nationally, award-winning, correct?
Yes.
And it seems like this is still piecemeal. And I just would like to know, what, what are the impediments to creating this full-blown online school that has been your vision for the last six years?
I think the impediments have changed over time. I think initially it was reluctance of our school system to embrace online learning. And there was a fear of losing FTEs. But I guess I'm more concerned about losing kids and not meeting kids' needs than losing FTEs. And I, I think that fear, people understand, one way or another, students are going to access online learning. Why don't we be in charge of it and take control of it? Costs are another issue. I think it was generally done through charter school. We could still do a charter school, but I think the laws have changed quite a bit about how we can approach it. I've been having discussions with, with vendors about, about an online school and trying to establish, my whole goal would be that we could establish something that our students could access courses for free and really make it a big win for our school district. So, as we continue to have those discussions, hopefully there'll be more information coming to the board in the near future on it.
Is some of that, would you say, the fear of the unknown, that we have a job to do, perhaps a little bit more in communication to letting our community know what is available? I'm not so sure that we've done, and Beth, I would, we should comment on that also.
I just think that one of the things we have to remember is that when we have used online courses for extenuating circumstances, those have been situations where our curriculum is not meeting the need, you know, of a student. And so, we feel responsible to their learning development and contributing to that. When students are electing to take it and we do have curriculum. So, for example, if we have an English nine course and a student were to elect to take English nine, that would be, if the district were picking up the cost for that, it would be at a cost of 200 to 300, 350 for them to take the course. So, we, we want to balance somehow being able to provide opportunity. But when we have those courses already available and we're already contributing to an FTE for students to be enrolled, it doesn't seem to be fiscally responsible to then say, we also pay for a $350 course because someone is choosing that. So, I think what Dr. Earl's trying to say is if we can find some ways to make the opportunities more available to students, then I think that's where we can offset the expense of, you know, are we paying for a teacher already to teach it? Or are we going to pay for them to take it through an online service? So, for example, if we had 30 students that wanted to take English nine online, then we could, in lieu of having a teacher that is going to be physically present to teach it in our building, we would have it taught through an online agency that has an online teacher available. So, we're not paying for something we already have available to students.
I think one other piece too, no, that speaks to it. But I think we had the success this past summer with the economics course and the number of students. And I think that drives, success breeds success. And I think that drives us and said, we can do this and we can do it successfully. And I think we can do it in a fiscally responsible manner. So, one way or another, we're going to have those opportunities for, for our kids.
And I think we've talked about, we could offer certain courses online as an option if we have enough students at registration time. And if enough students were to sign up for them, so the economics course, we could offer that online. And if we have enough enrollment, we could then offer it as an online venue instead of a in-person teacher venue.
Please, Jared?
This is really great. Thank you, Mr. Mahoney, for putting these guidelines in writing. I'm assuming that they're in practice currently, especially at the high schools. However, they haven't really been written down.
Yeah, I should be clarifying that.
Oh.
This feels like a wagon that is picking up speed. And I think we tried to in the beginning, we were looking at students' medical needs and very severe situations. And then we had this next tier of situations where courses weren't available or there were some real, and so now we're trying to make the decision, I think, you know, to help me, I mean, to help me kind of make some good decisions. I didn't want it to be a Dennis Mahoney decision. I want it to be something that, you know, when I say this is the way that we're going, there's some, there's some meaning and some, you know, real thought behind it. So, I came to, actually to Therese and to Beth and said, I need some help. We need to, you know, I need to have some parameters to work with. I think you're going to see, as time goes on, many more requests. I think this is just the beginning.
Well, I was just curious because it seems like the administrative guidelines that you drafted here are more specific to the high school level. When we're talking about transcripts and grades and credits. One thing that I would like to make sure that we consider is the linkage back to the face-to-face curriculum and how administratively we can support the students who decide to take the online courses. So, my understanding of the online courses is that there's a seat, whether it's paid for by the school district or a student pays, a student's family or student pays directly. They're able to take that course and there's an online teacher that they correspond with. It's not within the district. But there are occasions where I think the people in our district have to be the shepherds, so to speak. And how does that linkage occur? And then the second thing would be, when the student comes back to the face-to-face setting in the classroom, how does that teacher know what skills and standards the, the student already knows and can do? And how do they stay on their, you know, path?
Well, presently, when we have online courses, when we're using them in extenuating circumstances, they have to be aligned to the Wisconsin State standards. If there's any doubt, the, I, I get calls asking to review, you know, to take, to review that to ensure that it meets our standards and benchmarks. For example, we could run across an online economics course, but if it doesn't have the financial literacy piece, it does not meet, you know, Wauwautosa graduation requirements. So, those are reviewed individually. Some have, some have been used very frequently, so, you know, but occasionally if a new request comes up, any online agency that is not aligning things to Wisconsin State standards or to the common core would be negligent. We wouldn't be using them.
Exactly. And the way, but I didn't mean my question or my comment to, to be taken that way. I just wanted to make sure that there were the appropriate linkages within our school district administration to shepherd the students through this because they really are on their own, working with an online teacher, is what I understand. And then if they come back inside the classroom, that the teachers really are comfortable, whether they're the, whether they're the lead people in the curriculum or whomever is designated to, to make sure that those linkages and, and that path stays consistent for the student. That's all. And I would like to see us expand this semester-wise in high school. I, I would like to see it very much expanded. And I know this is just in brief, but we want to do this for the kids. And the kids are responding to it. We want, allow them to have more opportunities. This is one way to do that. And I'd like to see it more quickly implemented.
Mr. Croner?
Thank you. It's apparent that online classes and other electronic means of learning are going to be a huge component in learning in our schools, in all schools. And ours in particular are going to reach every student, so I fully support that. One concern I have, and it's not the way that students are placed in the courses now at all or the courses that are offered, is the board's role in that process. So, I'd like to ask a few questions about that. And I don't know whether you would necessarily be the best people to answer them, but I just have a few questions. In your administrative guidelines, where you talk about extenuating circumstances, your last, under the definition of extenuating circumstances, your last circumstances are extenuating circumstances. Okay, so that seems to cover everything. So, my question is, the board has entertained the notion, but not yet discussed in a public meeting, whether students that are considered for expulsion should be placed in online programs. So, does that line allow you to put students that you might consider for expulsion to an online program without board approval?
I think the boards, the expulsion orders are explicit in whether or not we offer anything. So, if the, if the expulsion order is explicit and says we can offer online courses or offer coursework, that would certainly fit that.
My, I guess I mean prior to that, the administrative hearing. If a student normally would have been referred for expulsion, does this document now allow you to place them in an online school instead of coming to the board for expulsion?
I think that when students are in administrative hearings or in expulsion, that, that's the process we're looking at. We're not looking at using online learning as a way to change how we approach administrative hearings or expulsion hearings.
Okay.
That statement wasn't written with that particular situation in mind. That wasn't part of a discussion we had. I think the thing that we have to consider there too is at whose cost, because again, the online courses do cost money, and if a student is, been expelled, if that's something we want to offer to them, it would be at, I'm assuming, at their cost. So, the reason that particular line was put in there was more just that we thought, okay, there are probably some things that we, we talked about situations that we're aware of and that we deal with most frequently, and we're trying to cover those. That wasn't one that was part of the discussion, and so we kind of put it in there so that we didn't cut off someone or some discussion that possibly should be considered. But I think the question for expulsion would be, you know, who would be paying, and if they're still our student, that would be one thing, and if they're expelled, that possibly they're counseled on the availability of it and how they could access those courses, and that we would accept those credits back into, you know, our, you know, accept the credits for them when they return or if they return.
Okay. I just asked, I didn't understand that. I know board members have, at least I have very unsettled ideas to how to approach that particular issue, so I'm looking forward to having full board discussions on how we should approach that as a district, so I just didn't know. My other question, last summer we had a presentation, and when we, the presentation from Advanced Academics, and one of the reasons for bringing them in at that time, as I understood it, were that there were a number of students that were thinking of leaving the district for full online courses, and you mentioned that six students did not leave the district, but they were taking, are they taking a full slate of online courses for their coursework?
For the most part, they are. Now, what we did, just so that I am clear on this too, that they may not be taking five courses at one time. What we try to do is to give them two or three, and then get that done at half the time, and then give them the remainder. We're at that point now where we see one of our students as, in this case, is an open enrollment, that she has completed, starting to complete those courses, and we started her a little bit later. We didn't start her very first day of school, so, but we keep, try to keep track of how many days she has for this course to get completed so that she can stay on track. The nice thing is, a number of these students are credit recovery, they really want to graduate, so there is some motivation for them to push as much as there is for me to push them.
Okay. The reason I ask that is because at the time when that comment was made in the summer, and I think my main concern about developing the online program is not that we're doing it, but that it's, that it's moved faster than our policies have moved, and the board, this is really being developed without board input of any kind. And to me, if the board is charged with officially adopting the curriculum, which our policies say, and we have procedures for new district courses going through the Curriculum Council, it seems to me that, you know, we have the administrative guidelines, and they look very reasonable to me, but they don't apply to a specific policy for online courses. Now, I searched online courses in our policy manual, and there isn't one, so I'm assuming people will think it falls under our curriculum policies. But if that's the case, the board should be, seems to me, either approving the contracts or the companies that we're contracting with, or if students are taking particular courses, that they should go through the Curriculum Council, like our other courses do, to make sure that, as you say, they're fulfilling the requirements for the Wisconsin standards and things of that sort, and then, and maybe in a group come to the board. So, I guess, this is not, this is a comment for you and for the board, I would like to see us examine our policies and write a policy for online courses, and then actually discuss and decide what the board's role in this, because it seems to me kind of a shadow school system, where we're deeply involved with every other course that the district offers. But the online courses, it's growing greatly, but the board won't have any role in those courses, so.
And I'm just going to make a comment that, that's correct. I looked, I searched for board policy because I was looking to where the guidelines fall, and I thought fifty-four, sixty graduation requirements is where, these administrative guidelines is where the alignment was going to be, because there really wasn't, there is not a specific policy that says online courses to place it. So, the other policy that seemed related, but isn't very, wasn't helpful in guiding, in guiding, like when Dennis did have questions, was fifty-four, sixty-three. So, you know, I really thought the graduation requirement was where it would be placed presently, so.
But it seems to me, I mean, I think the board needs to address this, because when we wrote the curriculum policy, we wrote it very broadly to not include just the standards, but I think it says, you know, everything that constitutes the teaching of a course in a school. So, this seems to fit under curriculum, but it's, but it's not treated that way, and I think we should have a discussion as to how we're actually going to approach it, as if this program's going to keep growing in the future, as I think it probably should.
Mary Jo?
Just to respond to Mr. Croner, I don't think that this is developing curriculum. I think you described it, Mr. Mahoney, as an alternate delivery, and you, Mrs. Ehrenberger, indicated that it has to meet all of our standards. So, we are not really, and shouldn't be deeply involved in curriculum, but-
This may be speaking.
You know, we will certainly, you know, get presentations from administration about vendors or whatever, as, you know, proposals come forward, but I don't see this as developing curriculum. I see it as a delivery method.
Let me just add that, and I think I, I believe this earlier, but of the fifteen that I'm looking at today, the ones that are active, we probably wouldn't have any of those currently with us, at least. They might be on our rolls, we might have been able to get money from the state, other things like that, but I doubt that you would see them at report card time. So, I think that it's been easy to this point, because it's kind of a triage for me, you know, but now that it gets to this next layer where, you know, you're going to have a lot of different situations that maybe, you know, we didn't intend, or we are kind of outside of that, now I think that's a time to, you know, look for a helpful policy as to how you wish to proceed.
Yes, Mr. Croner?
Yeah, I really think we need to do that, because I remember Dr. Erdl saying, "Well, there's nothing to limit the number of courses students can take," but it seems we crossed a line somewhere, where if a student is taking one or two courses that they couldn't get in high school, or that would help them catch up in other subjects, to students all of a sudden taking mainly online courses for their degree. And I think the board should have a discussion, we should have a policy that deals with that. I mean, going from being in classrooms in buildings to all of a sudden granting degrees to complete online courses, seems like, seems like we've moved across the line somewhere, and the board needs to be involved with that, because that is a curriculum issue.
I'd be happy to take any directive from the board on what you want to approve and what you want brought forward. I just look at it much more globally, and I respectfully disagree and don't look at it that way. I clearly say that it's, as Mrs. Randall said, it's a mode of delivery. It's not approval of curriculum. I mean, I go back to my point and say, "Do we, do we want to say we're going to approve whether or not, how many lecture classes a student can have, or how many lab classes, or some of those things?" It's, I mean, I think if it's looking at, if we're doing our job administratively to make sure that it aligns to the common core of the Wisconsin State standards, and I think that's what we're carrying out. We're carrying out that curriculum policy to make sure that it does align. This is just an alternate method. We accept students that transfer in from other schools, not having a clue what kind of instruction they were getting. They get, they can come in their senior year, we're giving them twenty credits from the previous school district, and they get a Wauwautosa diploma. If they take a couple of courses, even that semester, they would get it. I think this is even much more controlled on our part to really define how it is. So, I look at it a little bit differently, but as I said, if the board has a directive that they want information brought back and want to take action on something, I'll be happy to follow that as well.
And I just wanted to say that I don't know, this is, that there has been a precedent in the past where, when it wasn't online, but it was like correspondence for the kinds of things that, those extenuating circumstances, that that has been a different mode of delivery, and it's been used for a very long time. I talked to their school counselors, and so that's been going on for a significant amount of time. So, now that it's online, I don't know if there's a difference between someone that's taking online courses under extenuating circumstances, or a few select courses versus that student that is going to get a complete online degree. So, I don't know if that's a delineation or not, but we do have some past practice. I get concerned that if we did go back to like approving individual courses, that it could be, you know, if the board were to approve individual courses, it could get very cumbersome and involve a lot of, might actually impede or delay some of the ability to have students enroll in online courses, but there might be a difference in someone that's getting a degree that's completely online. Just kind of answering with a question.
No, Mr. Meyer?
Well, the superintendent has said that he is following policy, and this, this online world is, is dynamic, fast-moving world, and Mr. Mahoney has done us a great service by explaining this to us about how he's operating and how it is evolving or moving forward. And if the board wants to be involved, considering that this, the world is going in this direction in some fashion or another, we sort of need to lead. Lead, follow, or get out of the way. Right now, I agree, the board is following, and we may wish to lead from a policy perspective, but caution that we not get in the way. And the, so, from my view, administration should proceed with all speed they feel appropriate. And if the board wants to assert leadership, then fine, but as far as I can see, we have, unless we call the roll, there's no, on a motion to stop you or slow you down, there's no reason for administration to stop or slow down if proceeding in good faith, believing that you're following policy.
Mr. Croner?
I'd just like to reemphasize, I'm not asking to slow anything down. I think this is going to be really beneficial for our students. Earlier in the meeting, we were making an important decision whether a certain sentence in a policy said a six or a twelve, and that was really important to us. And here we have a whole program that's going to be developed without board input, and that, that's okay. I'm not looking to slow anything down, but I think that, that we need, we ought to have an online policy if we're going to offer online degrees. That's all I'm saying. I think we could develop that policy and expand the program at the same time, but I think it's important, if we're going to be a policy governance board, that we have a policy that at least governs this program. The one question I would say about it just being a different form of delivery, so if students take courses that we can't offer in the district, so they're taking a course that's not offered, why does that not fit under the curriculum approval process? It's not a different, it's not like delivering Algebra One online versus Algebra One in our class. Someone takes aeronautical engineering online, and we don't currently offer it, why are all of those courses outside the curriculum policy? So, that's the kind of questions that I have, that I don't exactly know the answer to, but I think we need to discuss at a policy level. I guess I'm curious of your opinion as to why those courses that aren't offered in the district wouldn't be under our curriculum policy?
Yeah, I am not aware that right now we are approving any courses that are outside our curriculum. I think that most of them are very typical courses that are in our curriculum. I'll let Dennis, who's taken a peek here.
You might be referring, we have, we have a young man that could not get a particular chemistry class in for second semester, and in order to take care of that situation, because this had to do with an entrance, I believe, into a university, we were able to help that situation out. It's a course, and I don't know, Phil, if that's the one you're referring to, because that's the only one that, that I can think of where we would offer something that typically, you know what I mean, that would be out of sequence or something, but as far as offering a course that we don't offer, most of our courses line up to courses, even in the middle school, we have a, it's designated middle school eight or middle school seven, so maybe I'm, I could be, I'm just not understanding the question.
Well, and I, looking at youth options, again, youth options are, is a state program where students can take classes at the university. Using an online option, we can also look at or offer the students that experience online via, through youth options. So, that would be an example of when we would look at, for example, I think it's, you know, right now we have students that's in French six, and offering that opportunity online versus at a university, because for youth options, one of the challenges for some of our students is being able to access universities, get themselves there within the context of their school day, because they have to be in school, and so it kind of limits what kind of options might be available to them. So, that would be the example I think of when we talk about, you know, classes beyond what we currently offer.
Yeah, I wasn't looking at a particular class. I was just thinking, one of the great strengths of this program, say you had a music student that had exhausted all of her music theory courses, and they could take an online course at a conservatory of music that's currently not offered in the district, or someone that's in chef foods that has an opportunity to do some kind of online advanced cooking course. I mean, those will be courses that we don't offer, but they're clearly advantageous for the student to take, but they're being approved outside of our curriculum process, and not saying, I know everyone has great intentions, and everyone's professional, and they do great work, but I'm saying it's not the way our process normally works, and I just think the board should discuss how that fits in.
Michael?
Our process is stodgy, slow, and obstructive, and we heard in the leave conversation that we should not grant twelve weeks, because it is a policy that says six weeks. And somehow, the fact that it already was a policy created some inertia against changing it, or discussing changing it, when it seemed to make sense. If we do this in the technology world, we are going to be behind, and our kids are going to be behind. This board cannot keep up on a policy basis with, with technology changes. So, somehow, you know, if we're going to get into the policy conversation, it has to be a different approach than we've taken in the past with respects to policy.
Is there anything else? Ellen? Thank you. Is there any community comment on this? Yes, please, come to the mic and give your name and address.
Hi, Paris, Prokop, whoa, loud, Paris, Prokopas, twenty-five thirty-five North Seventieth Street. Just had a quick, my question would be, with these students that are taking online courses, strictly online, I always make fun of my children saying, oh, they're, they're living in the new world, they're never even going to leave, need to leave home to date, and what are we doing with these children as far as participating in extracurricular things like sports, and dances, and drama club, and anything else that they're involved in? Because it seems to me like that's something that's not really taken into consideration. I mean, I think the online courses are a great deal, because it gives, it opens up the world to them that offer things that we can't offer, and, oops. I mean, that's, that's one thing, and then I was going to, the question is about the technology aspect. How many of you are qualified to actually make a decision in every technology thing that comes up? That's, that would be my concern with holding, holding up potential advancements, and like, like Mr. Meyer said here before, that's, that could be effective. When you're dealing with HR policy, that's a different story. It needs to be stringent, it needs to be solid, otherwise, because there's too many different opinions. But when you're dealing with technology and things like that, you have to let them do it. Maybe a way to do it is to create a certain standard, like you do in classes. You have standardized tests, and this is, this is the rubric on how you teach it, and whatever, and this is what the mean is, and how many people are beyond it, and how many people are below it. Maybe you set a certain standard for any courses that come to bear, allow Mr. Erdl's people to make that decision based on those standards. That way, they aren't coming to you every two weeks when something new comes up, and bogging down the board with extraneous things that you're frankly not qualified to decide on. Because the technology, I mean, some of you may be great in technology. I also see, I see iPads, but I also see a lot of paper, so there's, it, you don't want to bog down the ability for the students to keep up with the advancements in technology. That's all I'm saying, so, thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Price?
Hello? Thanks, I'm here to give you an update on the mobility initiative in the district.
Thanks, I'm here to give you an update on the mobility initiative in the district. So just a recap, about six months ago, we introduced, well, actually, it was probably about twelve months ago now, we started working along the lines of introducing some mobile devices into the district with the goal of breaking down boundaries in the classroom, potentially altering some teaching approaches to accommodate learning styles of students. Eventually, we purchased 1,000 iPads and deployed them. All the decisions that were made along those lines were by committee. The purpose of this presentation is really to give you an update on the progress, to identify or to, to point out some of the issues that we've run into so far, and just to give you a quick overview of some of the benefits and then next steps where we'll be moving forward. So pre-deployment of the iPads, this again is, is just a recap here. Staff that would be involved in the initiative and the classes were selected, they were selected based on a few criteria. We wanted to hit a spectrum of grades and class types, and also the teacher's technology aptitude was a factor in deciding on where those mobile devices would be deployed. We selected devices based on three pretty important criteria, battery life being one, the devices had to last all day, speed being another, that they had to equate to a teacher saying, pull out your textbooks and open to page sixty-four, you had to be able to do that just as quickly on, on whatever device it was that we chose. And then also the available applications, or the applications that were available to that, to that device. This resulted in the iPad being selected. It wasn't, we didn't, we didn't hit the ground with an Apple initiative, it was a mobility initiative. It just happened to be that iPads at that point in time were the best devices that met the need. We trained the staff, a few of our staff undertook some credit courses, but we also brought in a trainer from Wisconsin Lutheran College that trained our, our staff. We also conducted group committee meetings, peer support, et cetera. So staff had the devices probably for about six months before we deployed to students. So that was the pre-deployment. Then we hit the deployment. So we configured and deployed the iPads to buildings over summer break. What we did find was that that process was extremely labor-intensive. We actually hired a couple of students over summer that were dedicated to this task. They didn't work full-time, at least not for the full summer, but it, it ended up, we ended up with about 1.5 FTE over the entire summer break that just worked on these, these devices. They're not like PCs, you can't manage them en masse and just turn them on and have them automatically reimaged. Every device had to be touched, every device had to be upgraded, every device had to have a barcode applied and cataloged and so on and so forth. So that resulted in many hours of manual configuration, and like anything, when there's increased manual configuration, there's also increased opportunity for error, especially if people don't really care too much about what they're doing. When you're doing redundant tasks day in and day out, sometimes things get a little rushed. Towards the end of summer break, parents were informed, acceptable use documents were sent out to them, included in that information, where there are also some insurance recommendations, which I'm going to touch on a bit later, and some sundry supplies were ordered for the project as well, which included cases for the iPad, screen protectors, et cetera. So some of the issues that we faced during the deployment, the cases, they were delayed. They, they, because it was such a large order, because, because it was such a large order, it actually had to ship from China, and there was a factory holdup, and it was, it was nail-biting time, and they actually arrived at the eleventh hour, literally twelve hours before the first day of school, just enough time for us to get them out there. We have had a number of failures on those cases, but they're all warranted, so we've been able to return them and get replacements and so on. With the imaging of the iPads, like I mentioned before, that did prove to be slightly problematic because of the increased need for manual labor to, to do that. Imaging is where you wipe a device clean, you relay the operating system and the applications that you want and the configuration, et cetera, that you want. We do have centralized management tools to manage all of the iPads, but they had to be manually imaged before they could be managed by that software application. As a result, we did run into some config errors, and when the students received their iPads, we did have a number of students out there that their iPads just didn't work. It was quick fix, all they had to do was bring it back to the library and get them reimaged, but it was a stumbling point for those students at least. We also found that there are configuration limitations on the iPads. Apple is extremely restrictive about what you can and cannot do as a software developer when you're developing applications for these things, and that includes the management packages. It's not that the management package we use is, is lacking in features, it's just that Apple restricts them from doing certain things. And as a result, there are some management features that we would like to have, but we can't because of those restrictions. And subsequently, things get a little bit more challenging logistically when you want to make changes en masse. We also implemented a policy of no agreement, no iPad, so if, if you did not have a signed agreement from a parent, or if you're an age of majority student from the student themselves, which included, you know, acceptable use guidelines on what they should and shouldn't do, and also touched on the insurance portion of it, that the student didn't get an iPad. Now, those agreements were sent out to the parents prior to the start of school, however, some students didn't bring them with them on the first day. There had to be reminders and going backwards and forwards. So it wasn't a concentrated first day of school, every student has their iPads, it was actually a reasonably staggered delivery. But I'd say within a couple of weeks, it ended up that, that all the students got their, got their devices. Issues in the classroom, jealousy was a big one, especially at the middle schools. That was mainly caused by student behavior. I've got a shiny new iPad and you don't, so on and so forth. Also, we found that there needed to be some teacher education as well in identifying when the use of the iPad was appropriate. This wasn't so much a challenge at the, at the areas where we had it across a grade level, but for example, in the high schools, we have specific classes that have iPads, and when those students went to other classes with, that were mixed, where some students had them and some didn't, we found that in all good faith, the teachers would say, okay, for those of you that have iPads, you can do it this way because it'll be easier. And that was causing some animosity amongst the students in the classroom as well. So we needed to educate the teachers that, you know, even though they have these devices, it may not be appropriate. If you weren't involved in this initial rollout, it may not be appropriate for you to encourage the use of them in your classroom when other students don't have them. There was an issue with settling in, kids had to get used to having a tool in their hands and not a toy. Again, this was more at the middle school where they got very excited about having an iPad, and they thought it was going to be this, this wonderful thing that they could go off and do whatever they wanted to do on, and that's not the case. We had the devices locked down, specific applications and so on. So there's a lot of experimentation amongst the students. A lot of them were removing the profile that's on the device. The profile is what sets it up so that it can connect to our wireless network, so that it can do the things that we require them to do here in the district. And then they would go home, remove that profile, which cannot be locked down because that's something that Apple just does not allow you to do. So that they could use the devices for what they wanted to do, which was outside the boundaries of what we intended their use for. But the problem is then when they come back to school the next day, that profile removal resulted in them not being able to utilize the iPads in the classroom. So then it gets held up again because they have to get their iPad reimaged, and they have to take it down to the library and so on. And to go along with that, it's in the, in the acceptable use agreement, they're fully informed that they're not to do those sort of things. So then you've got disciplinary issues as well, you know, and, and education issues. A lot of the kids didn't realize, they didn't realize that was what it meant, so you had to educate them even further to say, no, you do not do this. You know, this is, these are the, the boundaries and how they're to be used. That's coming along well. We also noticed some increased responsibility issues, again, more so at the middle schools. Students getting used to the fact that now they've got a thing, a device, that they're carrying around and they have to look after. It's sort of like, you know, in the, in the, the home ec classes where they give them the, the fake baby. It's like now they've got something they've got to carry around and look after, and as the school term or semester started, there were quite a few incidents of kids inadvertently leaving their iPads in the classroom or, or some other location in, in the building. A lot of the principals have been very proactive in dealing with that, and if students leave them laying around and they find them, then they have been losing them for a set amount of time. They don't get them back for a couple of weeks until they are more responsible with them. Application updates, so the iPads have applications on them that were selected by staff prior to the start of school so that we could get them configured. The applications were placed on the, the students' iPads, and we had to create a cutoff date to say, okay, at this day, this is when we're going to start imaging and building these things out. So you cannot make any additional requests from this point forward because of such a labor-intensive task and so on. What we didn't think of was that the teachers had their iPads with the same applications, and they were receiving updates to their applications. But the iPads that we were deploying for students were locked at a certain level because we were in the deployment process. So when school started, there were not a lot, but a couple of applications that, especially in certain classes, were, were key to what they wanted to do, that had changed significantly during their update process. So what the teachers had on their devices was not what the students had on theirs, and the teachers wanted to take advantage of the new features, but couldn't because students had applications at a certain level. Now, that can be remedied, but it is a logistical challenge because to update those applications, you have to give the students access to the app store, and that's not something that we want to do. Because if a student has access to the app store, then they can go out and download any of the free applications that they see out there, and that's when we start getting into territory where not just a few parents, but the entire community starts getting upset because they're uncontrolled devices. So it's a logistical challenge because to update the apps, we have to bring the students into a controlled environment, open up the app store for a set amount of time, have them go out, update it, and then close the app store down again so that they can't, so that they don't have free reign. We do that, and, and it works with relative success, but even so, you open that app store for ten minutes and some of those kids just go nuts, and they start downloading as much as they can because they know they've got a five-minute window, so they get angry birds and whatever else they can get their hands on goes onto these, these iPads. Now, this has been fixed in the next operating system version, which came out a couple of months ago, and it came in, and it was actually released a couple of months after we deployed. So now we can update those applications wirelessly, so they don't have to come to a, to a Macintosh machine. We should be able to, to do that from a central location. However, to update the operating system takes us back to where we were last summer, and it's that entire, whole manual process of reimaging those machines. It'll only have to be done, done one more time. After that, then it can be done across the wire or across the air, but we just can't do it. I did look at potentially bringing them all back in over Christmas break and, and doing it, or over spring break, but it's just too much. We wouldn't, even if we, we had a team of people, we wouldn't be able to, to, to meet that. We need to do that over, over a summer period. And also, you know, we wouldn't want to erase every student's device and have them start from scratching in mid-year. I, I think we need to give them some stability there. Application functionality also proved to be a challenge in some areas, particularly with the web browser that's used. Internet access or internet acc, content access control is, is a challenge with iPads. If you're on the district's network on a computer or on a laptop or a Mac, Mac or MacBook, you go through our content filter. If you're on the, the district's network with an iPad, you go through our content filter. So when you browse the web, offensive contents blocked, you know, things, things that would not be really acceptable to the community as a whole are blocked so that students can't access them. However, because the students take these devices home and access them from their wireless network at home, we were faced with a choice of, do we put that burden on the parents or do we take positive control of that and also implement those content controls from home? We decided on the latter because we didn't feel that it was fair for parents to, to have that burden, or at least not totally. So in order to do that, again, because Apple restricts what you can do so much on their iPads, you can't actually do that with the default web browser that's on there. You have to use a third-party application, a third-party web browser, that then whenever it makes a request to the internet, hits their content filter and abides by whatever rules that you set. So this browser, and you turn off the default one, by the way. So this web browser, which every student uses to get to the web, was tested quite a lot, okay? But as we started the year off and more demands were put on that, demands that can only really be realized, as school is in progress and teachers are coming up with new ideas on what they want to do and so on, there were some limitations with the web browsers. So certain sites couldn't be accessed, certain functions couldn't be performed. So that caused problems in classes. However, the vendor of that, that application is very proactive and works with us very closely. They've rewritten that application specifically for us and then re-released it up to the app store. So as of the last code, all of the concerns that are related to that have been addressed. There are also some other apps that, when they were pushed further than what they were tested, you know, as again, as I said, you can only really do that in, in, in a real-time environment. Some of those apps too were found to not function as the way that the teachers either intended or, or assumed that they would. A bit of a glitch, bit of an obstacle, sometimes they worked around it, sometimes the vendors fixed it for us. Proper care and use, we did, we do, still do, have, have a bit of a problem with students not powering down their devices because the batteries on iPads last so long, and if you plug it in and, and charge it up with a reasonable frequency, you really never have to shut it down. The problem is, if you don't, every application that you've opened ends up running in the background, and eventually the thing gets bogged down, it's just like a PC. There was some education necessary at the teacher level and at the student level related to that. It was in the acceptable use and the, the proposed maintenance guidelines that were sent out, but they actually shut them down every night to avoid the problems, but no one took any notice of that. So what that hap, what, what that caused was that, you know, kids would go to use an app, maybe they'd use their Blackboard mobile client and it would just shut down on them, and they couldn't, couldn't do it, couldn't get to it, and, and it was causing frustration with the teachers because it worked yesterday and it worked fine and it didn't work. And now everybody's educated, now they know to go in and, and close these apps and shut them down, or, or just power down the device and, you know, the, the old typical IT mantra, right? Reboot before you call the help desk. It really applies to iPads as well. I mentioned before about the application updates, that's also for application additions and removal. It is logistically challenging, you know, teachers will go out and they're finding new apps that are being developed every day, and they want to add them to the iPads, and even though we have that centralized management tool, the only way to get those new apps on there is to open up the app store and do it that way. And it's logistically a challenge, causing some frustration with, with teachers. There are also some frustrations on the limitations of the iPad. The lack of, of, of the ability to interact with flash-based applications, websites, games, et cetera. And also a bit of a teacher learning curve as well. As, you know, they, they were new to it when the year started. And although, even though they put a lot of planning upfront into how they were going to do, utilize these devices in the school year, there's no greater educator than actually doing it. And once push come to shove and they actually brought these devices into the classrooms, there has been a definite learning curve for teachers as well. When they run into some of these issues that I described before, how are they going to deal with it? Do they just throw their hands up and walk away? Or do they say, okay, we'll find an alternative or, or call the help desk and wait for the help desk to respond and so on? Other general issues that we've noticed, network overhead increased dramatically. There was an extra thousand devices that are constantly on the internet. It affected the infrastructure. The infrastructure being the, what we invested in three, nearly four years ago now, that 1.3 million. Not negatively. The, the infrastructure held its ground and it was able to support what was put onto it. But I will say that it did push the boundaries. And as a result, we've had to pay closer attention to the activity on the network and start tidying things up. Yes?
Where was the constraint first occurring?
Our internet connection.
Okay. Help me out. Where, not the fiber itself?
Not the fiber itself, no. So the, the internal network, up to the edge, the perimeter, to where we get to the internet, that's, that's fine. I will say that the core actually saw a significant processor increase because it's switching a lot more packets. Again, but it still held. If we were to go a lot further, I would say that we would need to beef that core up a little bit. As far as the fiber's concerned, we have plenty of bandwidth there.
Okay, so not the fiber, but the, but the devices?
The core devices, not so much the edge devices, but the core devices and/or more, more in particular, the internet connection itself.
Okay, so just so, when that day comes, when you come to us and say, we need to expand something that we, we heard here tonight, it's not the fiber itself.
No, we've got a lot of bandwidth left on the fiber itself. It's just the, the devices connecting to those and supporting.
Okay, thanks.
These things go out and they're transmitting and receiving millions of packets per device. So a switch is, that's an added load on a switch and processing and memory, et cetera, all needs to, to accommodate that. And, but we're not at that point yet where we need to do it. Like I said, we just really needed to, to focus back on the, the core infrastructure and start trimming the fat, so to speak. Getting rid of some unnecessary services that were being utilized by staff and students alike, which were the modifications mentioned there. We also received a lot of parent complaints. And in two primary categories. I'll talk about insurance first. When we initially started with this, the committee decided that, you know, that, that we, what do we do if a, if an iPad's going to get, going to be stolen? Or if an iPad's stolen or damaged or something? Does the district cover it? And we looked at, what does the district do with everything else? If you take home a trombone and you lose it or is, if it's damaged, does the district pay for that theft or damage? Well, no, they don't. It's, it's a parent's responsibility or a family responsibility. Now iPads, obviously, are a little bit different because, you know, there's significant cost there. So there was a choice. Do we adopt the insurance for that or do we make that available to parents? We didn't insist that parents take out insurance. But when we sent out the form, there were three options. You had as to, in the acceptable use, you had to check one of the three. The first was, I will, you know, if this is stolen and it's covered under my home insurance or some other insurance that I choose to take out, if it's stolen, I will, or I will take out, we recommended an insurance company, Worth Avenue Group. I will take out the insurance with that. And there was a tiered cost. I think it was forty, forty-five and fifty dollars. Or the third option was, I'm not going to take out insurance at all, but if the device is stolen and damaged, I will accept financial liability for it. Now, this is no different to anything else that's in the district. Like I said, if you take home a musical instrument as, as a student, then the family is liable. The problem was that we brought that to the form. And we alerted parents about this need that if this device is gone, you're responsible for it, so here are some options for you. And there was some, some grief about that. And not a lot though, but there were some parents that were upset that they needed to invest in that. But we didn't, we didn't make it mandatory. It was just a, an option. The more, the greater level of parental complaints came from students that did not receive iPads and felt rather put out that their students were missing out. And that was, that was quite hefty. In fact, that was almost overwhelming because I, I took the time to answer every single one. And it was a lot of late nights for quite a few weeks there where it was just constantly talking to individuals about this, either via email or phone or face-to-face. That has settled down now. Unfortunately, there was nothing we could do about that. We didn't have enough to, to cover every student in the district. And we don't think that that was a wise move anyway. We need to do this initial deployment to assess how we're going to approach future purchases or if we're going to approach future purchases at all. Other general issues, we have had some FAS, six specifically to date, which isn't too bad, out of a thousand. Two of those have been within the district. The remainder have been outside of the district. In all but one of those, the parents had taken out some form of insurance. The other one, they hadn't and they just paid the money. And there have been minor amounts of damage as well. Kids have dropped their iPads and smashed the screens. But each of those has been insured and the cost has been covered. There have also been some issues just with general processes. Things that we're learning in this, in this deployment. What do we do if something's stolen? You know, they're, they're dealing with it in different ways at the high schools. So we're, I'll, I'll speak about this later, but we're meeting soon to see if we can set a standard for that across the schools. How do they deal with it? If a student has one stolen, who do they go to? And then how does that person respond to that? Do they bring the SRO in straight away? Does the principal get involved straight away and so on? The same with failures and repairs. And also with agreement violations. We, we realize that we really do need to crank down a little bit harder on the kids that go home and, and remove those profils. I mean, it's, at the start there, it was a learning curve. We're now at the, the point where, you know what? Playtime's over. You know that these are devices for school. You now know the, the ways that you should not be configuring or altering the configuration on these devices. So I'm meeting with principals tomorrow and we're going to discuss really implementing some sort of agreed-upon response to, to, to those things. Students need to be educated a bit more on those ramifications and enforcement. Other things, we had a lot of teachers asking for styluses. I couldn't provide it. I didn't have any more money. Then they wanted their kids to be able to present on their iPads and the iPad ones. You can't present everything. They want to do file sharing, et cetera, and, and some of the more security-related issues. Okay, so that's all the bad stuff. There is good stuff. There is a good side. I'm not going to harp on it for too long. Suffice to say that this presentation is really, I, I consider it just a checkpoint right now. There is an increased level, vastly increased level of interaction amongst students, not only between teachers and students, but amongst their peers. The, the, the environments that are using these effectively or the classes and grades that are using these effectively are doing so in such a way that students are learning from each other as well. They'll post their homework questions and utilize the iPads to share their ideas and, and comments. I've received a lot of unsolicited praise from teachers and parents alike. I've had parents contact me and, and say how, how pleased they are that these devices are in the district because they had a student, they had a child that, that just hated sitting at a desk and, and would never do their homework and hated doing, writing their essays out on paper. But now that they're at home and they have this device and they can sit in the armchair and just quickly type out their essay, they've seen remarkable changes in their, in their children and the way they're responding to this. Also with the alternative methodologies in course delivery, teachers are getting very excited about the applications and some of the applications that they've been using. And they really appreciate the real-time data that these applications can use and, and updated source material. So next steps. We have a principal meeting tomorrow. I'll be meeting with the four secondary principals. We can discuss the pros, cons, get feedback, et cetera. Really give me some ground to, to start laying out a plan as we move forward. I'm also meeting with somebody from Wisconsin Lutheran tomorrow to talk about the more in-depth research that we want to do about educational benefit with these students or the educational benefit that the devices have with the students. Then we have a teacher meeting on December 1st, which is this Thursday, yeah? Where again, we'll be talking about pros, cons. I'll be getting feedback from each of the teachers about their experiences in the classroom and building out a list of items that need to be addressed. So we will address those needs where we can, based on those principal-teacher meetings. Something I also want to do is, is what I've termed a cultural analysis. We ha, I have noticed that the success of this initiative is relatively reliant on the teachers and, and their personality and, and drive and ambition to integrate these devices into their classroom. And it seems that for some, there's somewhat, a somewhat natural ability to go with this and, and run with it and, and make it a success. The others want to, but are not as inclined or, or when challenged, when faced with a challenge, may turn away and, and, and take a different route. Understandably because they have an end goal to achieve. They need to, to teach so much in a lesson. And if this thing's not working, they're going to resort to contingency plan A. What I want to do is really look at our teacher population and try and identify and classify the different types of teachers and the, the varying levels of success that we see with these devices and try and identify what it is about maybe group A that makes this successful or makes it successful for the students and what can we do to maybe change the mindset of group B or C to, to become more like group A? But that's still in process. That's really all up here at the moment. I also intend conducting a survey early next year, which will include parents, teachers and students. And then we will conduct further benefit and research analysis based on the meeting that I'm having tomorrow. We'll be moving ahead with that. And at which point, at the end of the year, I'll come back to the board with a more comprehensive report on the effectiveness of these devices and where we should go from, from that report. And that's it. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Meyer?
Just to say thank you. You, you took on technology change, which is your line of work. And you also took on a thousand relationships with individuals. You took on facilitation of a cultural change. It seems to be a very, sort of, oh, I can't think of it now. Multi-dimensional job you're filling here.
There, there was a lot we've learned. I have learned. We've all learned a lot. It's, it's not just a learning experience for teachers, but it's also a learning experience for technology services. When this deployment occurred, I had data from Apple that we were amongst the top 20 iPad deployments in terms of volume in the world at that point in time. So we didn't, while, while a lot of schools were purchasing iPads, they were purchasing in blocks of maybe thirty or a hundred and not doing what we had done. So we didn't have a lot of case studies to go off and, and learn from. So, but suffice to say, we've learned a lot to date. And I'm bottling that up and putting it into a presentation that I'm submitting to a statewide conference pretty soon so I can share that experience with others and try to, try to help them avoid having to spend their nights responding to frustrated parents and...
Well, you know, the, I, working in a user interface role, I mean, five users a day can be consuming and you have many, many more than that.
We have about eight thousand.
Eight thousand users, yeah. So the enormity, it just, it's just enormous what you're doing. And I understand for the number of people you have and for the number of users you have and the individual attention that is obviously needed to make this culture change and to understand it is a culture change. I, it's, it's just stunning what you've done. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Randall?
Yeah, thank you very much. This is so exciting because, you know, you look at maybe what you think is four pages of problems, but it, it's four pages of learning. You know, all of the things that you've encountered and, and what you need to respond to or you've already responded to. I don't see, you know, you, I know that, you know, this started with your opportunity to get that many iPods, you know, to make it financially beneficial to the district. And so, as Mr. Meyer said, to take on that volume and, and then to work with that many different individuals and that many different ideas and that many different skill levels. Do you have enough staff? I mean...
I'll be returning at another board meeting to address that one.
Okay. I mean, yeah. You know, this, this is what we ask for as a board when, when you want to spend some money. Say, okay, well, how do you know it's going to work? You know, what have you done? So this report is much appreciated. And I am one of those people that could not ask a lot of specific questions about this. But I certainly did understand much of what you said and...
Yeah, I, I, I won't, and I certainly would not jump up and down and, and wave the flag and say, this is the most awesome thing that the district's ever done. But we never set out with that goal to start with. We set out with a goal of, of, you know, breaking down the boundaries, but, but utilizing this year to determine where the best fit is, what the best approach is. And make, like I said before, better or proper purchasing decisions as we move forward. So, and I, I think we're achieving that. We're learning a lot. There have been some obstacles and glitches, but that's all part of the learning process.
Yeah, I think this is doing exactly what, what we wanted it to do. Thank you.
Further questions? Mr. Cronin? Did you have your hand up?
I didn't, but I'll go ahead. It seems that the rollout has gone pretty well. I mean, I've only received a couple of emails from parents that had problems with it. And actually, I'm impressed that it has gone smoothly. It has gone, so that's good. The interesting thing for me that's come out of this is it seems easier to control what students see on a computer when it's in the school. I mean, if, if the internet has all the information out there that could aid education and their education is going to improve if we can get them access to all of that, but yet still restrict access to that in a way that reflects the values of the families in the district and all that. That when you give them something to take home, that seems to make that a more interesting problem to figure out. And I've heard some people say, I can't do as much as I really thought I could do on it because I can't get to everything that I can get on, you know, an unrestricted computer. So that's it. It's, it, to me, that's just an interesting intellectual thing to think about, is how to give them the most access to get the information they need to grow as much as they can, but still provide the protections that the community would like to have.
It, it's a challenge and that's, that's why we why we initially chose the route to control that access here because we don't think that parents are ready to adopt that burden themselves. You know, we could adopt a model where when the students are in the district, they're subject to the same rules and, and access that... subject to the same rules and, and access that the PCs are, but when they go home, they have open access. But then the burden really is on the parent to, to start to control that. And, and while there are plenty of proactive parents out there, there are others that are frankly just too busy, you know, to, to be bringing that burden upon themselves as well. So it, it's difficult. It's, it's a difficult ethical and educational challenge to, to address.
My main question is, I asked for this to be on the agenda because I was hoping we'd get an update on how we were going to measure how effective the iPads were in education, how we were going to measure whether they were actually increasing learning or not. And so I was disappointed to not hear very much about that, so...
No, we, we are working on that tomorrow, actually.
Yeah, I know, but we're partway into the second quarter already. And if we were going to be collecting data on effectiveness, would have been helpful to have that more at the start. So my question is, are, is that analysis going to include, for example, when you do the survey, a critical analysis of what classes it worked for? What classes the apps really didn't work for? And taking them out of that class and putting them into another class where a teacher has shown, I can do more with this than another class, that sort of thing?
Not in this first twelve months. The first twelve months, we really, I mean, I mean, the first few months have been consumed just with the, the rollout itself and the education of, of the teachers and the end users into the use, acceptable use and so on. So that, and, and also from tech services side as well with the, the centralized management and updating and deployment and so on. So to reallocate midpoint or even three-quarters of the way through the year would diminish the ability to harvest any data related to educational benefit. They really need to stay in place for this full twelve months so that we can, we do have the opportunity to, to, to get as much data as we can. If we, if we reassign them, if we do notice at this point, okay, they really work for these classes just based on what we're seeing, and we're going to reallocate, what are we basing it on? You know, the first few months was, was a learning curve, an unexpected learning curve, but it was more of a learning curve than we, we anticipated. So we basically lost a little bit of time where we could, we could really edge, analyze for educational benefit. So they need to stay in place for the rest of this year.
Well, I'm looking forward to a future presentation on exactly, you know, the program that you put in place to measure their effectiveness and how they're really doing in the classroom. Because the thing that I worry about is in the future, when we have to make budgetary decisions and we have, you know, a significant amount of money that we could thereby, you know, enhance this technology, or perhaps use it for new staff to work with, you know, a certain population of students, the judgment that goes through my mind sometimes, which provides a greater educational value. And so I, I'm hoping, I'm, I'm looking forward to how this program develops as far as how you're going to measure how they're actually working.
I'm glad you mentioned that because I, I, this was something that I did not include in the slide deck and I realized earlier tonight that maybe I should have. There was some concern from parents about the money that was, that was spent on these devices. And, and I, I think it's a very important point to, to make that we did not increase our budget to make this happen. We forewent other upgrades and other opportunities. And, and that's the intent moving forward is, you know, you mentioned, should we invest here or there? Well, if you're going to invest there and take the money from that initiative, then you're effectively going to reduce the technology services budget. You know, this isn't extra money that's floating around that we've used to buy these devices. It's, it's, they're devices that we're purchasing based on the current budget and we've seen a zero percent increase over the last four years in order to make this happen.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
This is a collaborative comment here. I've seen in, in the, in the form I work in, that in the first year of a rollout, there are those who embrace first time around the new tool or the new technology. But perhaps the second year, some of those people fall backwards to their old ways. So to the extent that the, the penetration of usage is being watched, that, you know, there may be a need at the beginning of next year, some people that you thought were safe bets to continue the new way because they embraced it in the first year, you may need to circle back around and have some refresher, you know, training for them or something so that they get a second year. And then by the third year, it'll be more of a automatic, you know, embrace the electronic way rather than the paper way. So just what I've seen from my experience, you know, the first wave, everybody's on board. And then a lot of people embrace it and continue independently. But a number of people will set the tool aside the second year and go back to the old way, just maybe they forgot over the summer or who knows what, but just to say, watch out for that.
Mrs. Vee?
Thank you. First, thank you very much. Your report as always is quite thorough and, and very informative and I do appreciate that. I have to say, I'm struggling a little bit with whether and how to comment because I have a different perspective than everyone who has spoken so far. I have a student who has one of these in middle school. And so I'm trying to, I'm looking forward to the survey so I can make my parental comments at that time. But as a board member, I also was wondering about what Mr. Croner raised, about whether or not we're going to redeploy these during the school year. So it's interesting to me to hear that we do want to continue this throughout this year to get a good baseline of information. I would suggest and, and request that when it comes time for the survey, that there is plenty of time and notification of that. I think that, given the feedback that I'm getting, and perhaps I'm getting more because I am in a circle of people whose children have these, and it's not frankly going perfectly at the middle school level. I think you kind of touched on that in your problems section. I think people need enough time and, and now, and awareness that there is a survey being taken because I think it is working pretty well at some levels and it's not working pretty well at other levels. And we do need to make sure that we get all of that information so that when we come to next year, after we've had this baseline year, we, and you can decide where to best use these. I think that they're great tools and that, that there are great benefits, as you've mentioned, in some areas, but it may be that how we initially deployed them was not optimal. So I would just respectfully suggest that when it comes time for the survey, that everyone, including the students, be made aware that that's there so that they can give their input as well. Thank you.
Mrs. Hufield?
Thank you. The report that you're going to share with us on effectiveness, when will that be coming?
Next summer.
Okay, so by the end of the school year?
Around that time. We haven't set a, a final date yet, but the end of the school year is when grades roll in, so depending on, but by, depending on our discussion tomorrow, I would imagine we'd probably want to include end of year grades in that report. So I wouldn't say by the end of the school year, but I would say relatively soon thereafter.
Okay, I'm just asking, because I, I assumed it was that, but then I thought, well, if you're having the meeting, maybe you can tell us something by the end of this year.
Yeah, I, I can come in, I can come in at a midpoint and give another update. I can give as many updates as you want, you know?
Well, what I was thinking is if, and I am also hearing that there are some classrooms utilizing these much better than others. Is there a way that we can observe that, not as a board, but in the buildings? Are we observing the classrooms to see how these machines are being deployed to help us instead of just relying on a survey? And that's what I would suggest we do. And I don't know if that would create angst, you know, for people, but...
Again, this all depends on tomorrow's meetings and Thursday's meetings and so on. But it's something that we can do, absolutely. At this point in time, it's really based on feedback from the teachers. And again, I'll go back to what I mentioned with Mr. Croner. The first couple of months was an unexpected series of challenges in the rollout so that we couldn't get to that point, what, what you're talking about as soon as, as we designed.
Oh, no, I understand. And please, my comments are just that, I would like to do whatever we can to help the remainder of the school year. If we really can get some, some staff members in to observe some of these classrooms to help the educators and the students get better at this, because it's obvious this technology is working. And I understand that, that techno, you know, the technological pitfalls of trying to deploy basically with the staff and all of the issues that you have described from an IT perspective. So I just want to make sure that we cover that part of it too, have some observations. So I'm not sure who would do that. If it would be part of the principals' evaluations of the classrooms, maybe they could add a component of this. Would it be student learning? I don't know. Would it be student learning along with IT? I don't know. But I think it would be really beneficial to see this in use. And I myself would like to sit in on some classrooms too, to just see how this is working. And the superintendent has usually graciously set some of those up for board members when, you know, when asked. So that's all I was suggesting in addition to a survey, so we can really provide some help and hopefully fix some of these things before the end of the school year.
Mrs. Darenberger?
I'm just impelled to make a comment. I am not aware of any research that links student achievement gains from iPad usage. So I, I will explore that further, but I, I guess I don't want to make lofty claims that we're going to see student achievement results because I think the purpose of the deployment of the iPads was to support student achievement, but I guess to look at direct gains, I'm, I just want to be cautious about saying that there's even present research out there that says that those links are there. I do know, I sat with Jamie earlier in a conversation about how to evaluate iPad usage, and we had a pretty in-depth discussion about that because, and that's, I, I know he's returning, but I just, I just feel like I have to say that so that we're not setting people up to think that I, iPads get you notable achievement gains. I don't know where that research would be.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Yes, Mr. Mayor?
I'll point back to five, eight, ten years ago where a lot of rooms in our buildings had computers. And you'd walk in the room and no one was actually using them. Well, no one is an exaggeration, but, but they weren't integrated into the day. And I think the measure of success is whether the machines are integrated into the, the student's day. And if, if there's no measurable change in performance, in outcome, in data-wise, well, okay, so be it. But it just stands to reason that if we have an electronically based day, things are moving faster than a paper-based day, even though I sit here with all my paper. So please remember, the measure of this, I, I don't think, as, if, if you say there won't be data to show better test scores, fine, that's, that's life. I, I mean, that's the way it is. But we know that, you know, a, a day that's integrated with technology goes faster than a day that, that's totally manually based. And, and so if, to me, the measure will be, do we actually see kids using these things dur- during, during, during the class to, to, to do their homework or, or things like that? And that's a different kind of, of, of measure. We've, we've uplifted the sophistication level of our kids that these things are, are beyond, you know, use for Facebook, that you actually use them as productivity tools as far as getting your work done. And you may write your paper faster. The, the, the grade may be the same as, but you have more time for other things, for example. So enough said by me.
Mr. Croner?
Thank you. Also about the valuation, I wasn't necessarily looking for, well, I'd like to see specific numbers increased, that would be great. But what I'm more concerned about is actually how they're being, like others have said, implemented in the classroom. You know, if we have a class where the teacher does an exceptional job and there were fifteen apps that they downloaded and it was being used, you know, every two days a week or three days a week, and there are other classes of that same type that would really benefit, it would be good to take advantage of that. If there was another class where we found at the end of the semester, the teacher downloaded two apps and only half the kids brought them to school because they weren't really useful, then maybe those should go to a special education class or some other test site rather than let them sit for another semester. So I'm really concerned that we don't have a system in place, or I'm hoping that we can get one soon, where we are, part of it is monitoring in classroom use and how effective are they? You know, if, if a teacher's thought it would be really effective, but it wasn't, we need to get in there and do something to help that teacher improve, or maybe redeploy them to another test site where they might have a fantastic benefit. So that's the kind of testing I was thinking of.
I guess... Nigel? I, I guess I'm seeing that in your next steps, right? Those are all the things that you described are going to be happening in your next steps?
Meeting the needs of the teachers that have it, based on the input that we receive in the next few meetings, yes. So the intent would be that if we have those that are not utilizing them as much as others, based on those descriptions, we'll, we'll address that, or we, we will try to address that, so...
I guess, again, I, I see a lot of learning here. There's a lot of questions, there were some problems, but I think at this point, the fact that we're identifying those is, is what we want. And, and that you do have next steps, so, I don't know.
As a district, we took a, a big step forward and now we need to allow you time to observe that, correct what it needs to be and find out where there are some problems. And a phenomenal amount of work has been done in a very short time, so we respect that a great deal.
Thank you.
Is there any audience comment, please? Yes, please.
I'll be the flying the ointment tonight. Now, Paris Procopis again, address, I told it before, do I have to tell it?
Could you give it again, please?
Uh, 2535 North Seventieth Street.
Thank you.
Now, this is awesome, the kids are getting on iPads as I sit and hold my iPad here and I actually looked up student achievement and iPad just in a Google search and a whole bunch of stuff came up. But one of the things that you're doing is you're creating a new way of learning for kids as an effort to get them excited, so you'll be able, you'll see achievements, achievement in different ways as opposed, it may not necessarily, like one, one of you said, whether they do it on the iPad or they do it on a regular computer, they may still get an A on the paper or a B on the paper, but you're, you're engaging them in a different way. One of the things, it was mentioned about possible redeployment, if there's an area where it's not working. One of the things, one of, my only complaints, the deployment was not thought out probably the way it should have been. I remember, I mean, my, my daughter also goes, is in middle school and she was in the one-third of her class that did not receive the iPads. So in a sense, you have one-third of an entire grade level that's not consistently learning with that other third. Or you have two-thirds that aren't consistently learning with that other third, in some ways getting set behind. Luckily, my daughter has access to iPads at home. We, we have three of them at home and four computers, I'm a geek, what can I say? But it's, uh, that's something that maybe redeploy it to an entire class level to get more consistent data, because I don't know if the data's going to be that consistent because you're not getting the full demographic or the entire student spread as far as learning ability and that type of thing. But other, I mean, other than that, I mean, I think it's, you may have with any, with any computer, you really never know what you're going to face until you hit the end users. So with that, yeah, you definitely ought to be commended as a, as a taxpayer who helps, who helps pay for some of that, I think it's going in the right, right direction because we can't fall behind. So it shouldn't be a whether or not we're going to continue with this, I think it's how we continue with it. We have no choice but to continue with it, otherwise, once again, fall behind, so.
Thank you. Mike?
I, I just need to emphasize, Mr. Price is one of your, one of your trademarks, or that's not the right word. Your, your standard operating procedure is redeployment. You've redeployed processors, you've redeployed servers. From the day you walked in here, you have been metering and measuring everybody's usage of every... of everything in order to allocate the hardware and the software to the people who actually need the capacity. I, I have no worries, I have no concerns that you'll do the same thing here, because that's just what you do. So, your track record is always one of reallocation, redeployment to heaviest need. Um, that, that there, I guess in hindsight, you know, how many, where did we rank worldwide in size of rollouts, um, here?
It's, I don't know what it is now. What I, what I mentioned before was, at that point in time, but that was eight months ago.
Well, still, when, oh, yeah, the point, how fast things move, how fast things move, right? But eight months ago, where were we, you know, in...
We were in the top 20 at that point.
In the world. Top 20 in the world. So, sure, we're going to hit some things that weren't anticipated when you're playing in that league. Um, but then just earlier tonight, we saw with the Wabatoa West newspaper website, top 10 in the country. So, there's a lot of things happening here. We will stub our toes from time to time, we will adjust and we will move forward. But we are sort of at the, at the edge of, you know, what's going on in the country now, and I think that's a good thing. Do we have some heated debates in this boardroom about how? Well, sure. But we're, we're a pretty active technology district. Thanks.
Dr. Earl?
Um, just one other comment on the iPad. Tomorrow, we have two school districts with probably about 15 people that are coming to observe a math class at, um, West High School for the iPad use, one from Illinois and one is, uh, Greendale, so...
It's going to be too crowded.
It's going to be rather full.
For one more person?
Um, I'm not sure what time, actually.
I'll check then.
The other, the other piece on, on here is school resource officers. And what I wanted to do is just let the board know, I've been in discussions with Captain Weiss and the Police Department about the additional, um, adding an additional SRO and it sounds like there's a possibility at the city level to be able to fund the 25%. We would fund 75%. That would come out of the 80 fund or the Community Service Fund and roughly this, did I say 80%? 75%. Um, and that's about $75,000, just rounding between 70 and $75,000. So I wanted to make you aware that there's a good chance that I'll be bringing a proposal forward to the board for consideration in the near future.
Could that possibly start in the second semester of this school year?
I don't know that they, they could have an officer ready that early, but, um, my discussions have been February would, might be the earliest.
Which is very close to the start of the second semester, so...
Mrs. Randall?
I'm, sorry, Dr., so you're saying the funds are there in...
Possibly.
No, I mean, our, our portion.
Yeah, we could, we would be able to, um, to use the fund balance in the, the Community Service Fund to fund it, because it wouldn't be the full $75,000 in the first year of the budget.
Okay.
So there would, there would be enough to cover it and leave the flexibility in that 80 fund as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Croner?
Is, I guess, what is the evidence that we need in other officer? Have things happened this year that indicate it?
I don't think there's a... I, I think when you look at policing and, uh, with Chief Weber, I think one of the presentations he made to City Council, and I, I think it's pretty accurate, when you look at the police, what data is there to show whether or not, um, an SRO program is effective or whether or not a policing effort is effective? If you give more tickets, does that mean, if more people are being arrested, does that mean it's being effective? Um, I don't think that kind of data is, is the type of data that we would look at. I think my goal has been, since we added the first one, that I wanted to get one at every secondary building and it's about relationships and building those relationships with the kids. And I think the true sign is when things don't happen, um, that the SROs do head off because of those relationships in the buildings. And that's what I think, I think it's, uh, important to have somebody that's dedicated to a building so they can maintain and build those types of relationships that I believe can be effective from a school resource officer perspective.
Thank you.
The other questions or comments? Mr. Mayor?
Now, these, these resource officers, uh, speaking to the broader community, there's a benefit beyond the school building, from my look at it, that somehow the community as a whole is better off. I know, you know, people, a lot of people pay property taxes and they don't have children in the school district and it seems that, you know, but there are, but there are kids in the city, you, you know, and we all live together and things happen here and there and it just seems that if the, um, the, the world is, is better on the school grounds, it's probably better in the neighborhoods around it. And that's a subjective speculation on my part, but do you have any reaction to that, Dr. Earl?
No, I think a majority, majority of the issues, I mean, the problems that kids have at school aren't isolated in the school buildings. And I think that's one of those, those points that kids come to school and they have those relationships with the SROs and they come to them with, with problems or issues or concerns and they're able to be addressed because of the relationships and other, uh, I mean, to answer your question, I think there's a, there's more of a, more of an impact on the community than there is in the schools. But it's impacting the kids, um, our school-aged kids in the community in a positive way.
Thank you.
I don't mean to repeat what you're saying, but I think one of the biggest benefits is the relationship. There are young people who do not know where to go, they have information, they have questions, concerns, and the sooner they get to know the police officer as their friend and someone they can go to and trust. I think that's what you're speaking, that, that's, that's in the community and it can't help but help the schools also. I, I'm pleased to see that I'm going forward. Is there any community comment? Okay. Okay, is there a, a motion to...
Okay.
No, I'm going to make you get up and say... Is there a motion to adjourn, please?
Someone?
Mrs. Randall? Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Mayor? Um, honey, roll call, please.
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. Jerome?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Miltfeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mrs. Weber?